Thanks for being with us this evening. Well, good evening, everybody. It is the City Council meeting for the city of Edina this Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. It is 7:04 PM. Before I call the meeting to order, just a reminder, Director Bennerott went through this with you, but we're doing these meetings in a hybrid fashion. And so we've got folks listening in from home. We've been doing this during COVID and post-COVID. And I think with some success because some folks just aren't comfortable coming to City Hall. They may be watching on cable TV or any edinamn.gov live meetings or on Facebook. And we're going to get that number up on the screen here so they can see that because the opportunity to talk to the council about something that's of concern to them comes up fairly quickly for the community comment portion of the agenda. So it's a little bit more complicated than it's been in the past. There's your call-in number, there's your access code, there's a password. Press * three to indicate an interest in speaking. The operator will bring you and Director Bennerott, if you're watching on us virtually, and then we'll listen to what you have to say. Keep in mind, folks, if you're going to provide some concerns or comments to the council, you'll have three minutes. You'll get a yellow light when you've got 30 seconds to go, and that'll give you a chance to wrap up your comments. So having provided that information, let's call the meeting to order, and let's ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Houdlin?
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. So before we start the meeting tonight, and I did this with Mayor's minute today, recording it for tomorrow. I think all of you recognize this, and we certainly do, as serving in the capacity of being your representatives at City Hall, that ensuring the safety of people who live in a community is a top priority of every local government. Every day, we plan for our public safety personnel to do their jobs. The chief is in charge of all of that, and we still want him to go home at the end of their shifts. Yet each day, these brave people know that there is a risk to their own safety as they protect our safety, protect us. So it's a very special type of person who puts themselves in potential harms way every single day to protect all of us. And so having that thought in mind, I want to have a moment of silence in honor of Burnsville Police Officers Paul Elmstrand and Matthew Rugi and firefighter/paramedic Adam Finseth, who went to their rescue when they were both injured. So let's take this time to have a moment of silence to recognize those fallen officers and the paramedic. Thank you. I was with the mayor of Burnsville on Sunday. We happened to both be at a meeting of the leadership team for the U.S. Conference of Mayors, about 50 mayors meeting in California, when she sent me a text that she'd been up since 3:30 in the morning, talking to the people that were in charge of the negotiating that was going on, and then texted me again to say that they'd lost three people as a result of that incident in their community. So my heart goes out to her as well, but especially the families of those fallen officers and the firefighter/paramedic. It's really, really a difficult thing. I think we're all carrying that heavy burden here. It's a very sad time in our Twin Cities area. So knowing that life goes on, we've got things to do this evening that are important to our community. We've got a meeting agenda to approve. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, a second by Member Agnew to approve the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. Community comment. Now, let's go back, get that number up on the screen so that people can call in with any concerns that they have. We're going to let folks that are in the audience come forward first that have made the trip to City Hall to share a concern with us. And so anyone that has a concern they wish to raise with us, thanks for coming up. Remember to give us your name and number, and let us know what your concern is, and we'll maybe not be able to answer the question this evening, but we'll do our best.
Sounds good. No, thanks. Yeah, my name's Phil Mantai at 5712 Camelback Drive. Thanks for the opportunity to address everyone in the City Council tonight. Definitely appreciate it. And my question tonight is about recent incidents at the Amundson Flats Apartments Building, which is in the 62-unit affordable housing project that was recently built in the Cahill neighborhood. I actually spent a lot of time there, growing up at the SC School of Driving, if you guys remember that place. And it was about eight days ago, I think there was an assault with five individuals. One of them was sent to the hospital. And there was an interesting comment that I want to just read tonight that was made by one of the local residents who kind of shared her concerns about, you know, recent, not just that, but other incidents that have occurred there. And I'll just briefly read it here, because I think it's important to share this. And her comment is, it says, "I don't know what the answer is right now. A few tenants of the flats have commented how cheaply the place was built. Kids are wandering the hallways, there's drug use, garbage trucks are there three times a week for mattresses and junk. I've heard apartments are trashed, which there was more communication about the situations that occur there, as well as break-ins and other occurrences. I've been working here for 33 years. I want to feel safe going to work. I don't want to be verbally harassed, nor do I want to call not emergency if someone has passed out on our sidewalk or lawn, or asking our wonderful customers for money. It's just very sad, all the Cahill businesses are having to deal with this situation." And my question is just, you know, given our residents' concerns about this development went mostly ignored and ultimately, you know, came to reality, you know, what can we do to avoid these mistakes when evaluating, you know, future projects in, you know, in the future as a community? So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Mantai. Thanks for being with us this evening. Other concerns? Yes, sir. Come on forward. Give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Demetrius Milansky. I'm a resident in Londonderry Townhomes, 5728 Duncan Lane. I want to make a comment about the City Council commitment for a small area plan. Our expectation is that the City Council will uphold this commitment, and any decisions about any construction in this area will depend on the outcome of this small area plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ralph Zickert. I live at 4311 Cornelius Circle. Mayor, council members, residents of Edina. As part of the February 15th HRA consent agenda, an $80,000 draft proposal was approved to study the design options for a pedestrian tunnel under France Avenue. For three reasons, I asked the council to decline the pending contract with LHB until significantly more due diligence has been done by city staff and then vetted with the community via public hearings. First, as shown on the FEMA flood zone map, there are significant issues with the proposed location of the tunnel. Have we already forgotten that the area's high-water table was a main reason for the failure to construct Fire Station Number Two at Roslyn Park, construct underground parking at 6850 France Avenue, or salvage the underground parking garage at 7200 France, which is now an empty hole? Why does the city keep throwing money at projects that have no chance of success? Can you say "lid"? Second, as noted in the proposed design study, France Avenue would need to be torn up during construction, a construction process that one could easily imagine taking over a year. Resident, Edina residents, can you imagine the traffic through surrounding neighborhoods during construction? The HRA material made no mention of any prior discussion with the county to obtain a preliminary green light for the project. Yet France Avenue is a county road. So why rush to spend $80,000? Third, with respect to Member Rissler's procedural concern during the HRA meeting, Mr. Neal was correct. State law surprisingly does not speak to the need for quotes for professional services. However, city purchasing policy does. City policy states that two quotes are required for professional services. With the caveat, "as far as practical." Yet no justification was offered as to why it was not practical to obtain two quotes. Expedient, yes. Standard city practice, yes. But was there any reason provided for it not being practical? No. In addition, it's unclear whether the required environmental and community impact provisions of the city policy were complied with. Finally, I see this proposal as yet another overreach of the consent agenda, an attempt to push forward a course of action that has not been appropriately vetted with the community. And I would hope the council sees this as an example of why Mr. Neal's signature authority should not be increased to $100,000. Past practice has not earned that level of trust. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Zickert.
I attended a planning meeting a week ago, and I'm here again this evening. I understand there's no community comment today on matters on the agenda, as there were no community comments at the planning meeting a week ago. That confuses me, and perhaps you can help us understand when community comments are to be entertained and when they are not, why they are entertained at some meetings and not at others, as well as I ask for the city attorney here for the applicable statute that controls comments at either council or planning meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We can answer that for you this evening.
Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue. I was looking up some information today about the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, as it is called in Edina, and it got me wondering why Edina has their meetings at 7:30 in the morning, not in the evenings. I thought, hmm, how does this compare with other cities? I looked up Richfield, Bloomington, Hopkins, Minnetoka, St. Louis Park, and Eden Prairie's website. I couldn't find any information about their HRA, even though it says, it mentions it in there in some other parts of their website, but I couldn't find that. Had to dig further, take more time. However, they all have their meetings in the evening. If the HRA meeting is 7:30 in the morning, you are automatically excluding any parents that have kids to get off to school, anyone that has a job they have to report to, to be at by 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock. You are excluding many people. Try and find a babysitter for a 7:30 AM meeting if you want to get there. So I think it needs to be moved to some evening time, just to make it more fair and equal for residents to be able to attend if they so choose to. Another point, the HRA, Housing and Redevelopment Authority, all of the members, as you full well know, are the same people that are on the City Council, plus the mayor. Some cities do that also, like Edina, but others do not. Others have two city council members, and then other people that are commissioners that are on their HRA boards. I think that's a direction we should be going, because when people are electing city council members on the ballot, it says "City Council," or it says "Mayor." It says nothing about the fact that they are also electing someone to be on the Housing Redevelopment Authority. That is not widely known by most people in our city. And I think either change the wording on the ballot, which would at least inform people when they go to vote, or change the structure of our Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Because I think having the same people as on the City Council, all the same, it creates a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weston. Thanks for those thoughts. Anyone else? Okay, let's turn to the virtual world here before I go back and talk about Mr. Anderson's question.
I have a caller who has raised a hand.
Okay, very good.
Caller, I'm going to unmute your line. You should hear a tone. Please be sure to turn down your television or whatever you're watching the program on, and then begin your remarks by stating your full name and address for the record.
Michael Hayden, 6704 Parkwood Lane. I respectfully remind the council members to follow through with the small area plan that was agreed to in the fall of '23. The residents of Edina are trusting you to do so. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. James. Anyone else? Director Bennerott?
Muted myself. I do have another caller, but the caller is not indicating a desire to speak. As a reminder, if you'd like to speak, please press * three on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number three. I'm still not seeing a signal to speak, so I'm assuming that caller is just listening into your meeting.
Okay, good. All right, let's just go back to the list. I don't know if Mr. Mantai's comments about the person that was making observation on Amundson Flats, you know, what's the status on anything there? You wanted some time to think about that one and respond to it, because I think it's still a matter that's under investigation. Yep. Yep, we've got a couple of people in custody, I think, for that assault. But some of the other issues that he raised, we can discuss at a subsequent meeting. So the historic way we did this was to gather questions tonight and then give staff time to answer them at the next meeting. But we've altered that process a little bit. Now we're trying to get information back to people quicker, so we're using Better Together Edina. No? Yep.
We're posting comments on the main city website, edinamn.gov, under the City Council Comment, the City Council section of the agenda on a page called Response to Community Comment. We will have answers to these questions posted no later than Friday.
I didn't want you to get whiplash when I saw you going like this, when I was thinking that it was on Better Together, so that's why I thought I better call on you right away. I think that Mr. Anderson's one that we can answer. So, and I've been around long enough doing this, it was, there was a process we had, pre-skinch plan, where somebody would, as a developer, the only option they had was to come in and decide they were going to file for a particular project approval and see what happened. So they would file for preliminary approval, they'd spend a whole bunch of money with architects and getting everything ready and filing fees, and then they would come to the City Council and find out, well, gee, it might not be a great idea. And so they'd spend a great deal of money getting this application ready for filing. So what we did was, I think this was a former council member's idea, that in some cities, they do something called sketch plan review. And so you could come with an idea on the back of a napkin, and you could come to the Planning Commission, you could come to the City Council, and it wasn't a public hearing, but you'd come and get some feedback on your project and decide whether it was something that was viable enough where you might want to go back and think things through, talk to staff, and then file or not file for preliminary approval. And so it was meant to be a cost-saving measure and an efficiency measure, and that's what we're actually doing tonight. And that's what the Planning Commission did last week, was to take the matter we've got involving the potential project. Nothing's been filed by the potential applicant with regard to the project over off Bren Road, but we're going to hear from them tonight and give them some feedback in terms of what the council thinks about this modified plan. But it's not an opportunity for people to testify. That would come at a time when they actually filed for preliminary approval, and then we go through a lengthy public hearing process. So in the process of that preliminary hearing, there'd be an approval, there'd be a hearing. In the process of that preliminary application, there would be a public hearing, and there would also be one at the Planning Commission preceding the one that would be held at the City Council. And then before final approval of anything, there's always another public hearing. So there's several public hearing opportunities where people can testify. But the notion of sketch plan is just that a developer can come with an idea that they have and get feedback from the Planning Commission and the council as to whether, and then go away and make a determination as to whether they want to proceed or come forward and file an application, seeking preliminary approval. So I think that's... Director Teague, would you want to add anything to that?
No, I believe you covered it.
All right, very good. In terms of what Janie Weston suggested, that's something we can take under consideration. Mr. Zickert's comments, we'll take those under consideration. Whether there might be other models, as Janie Weston said, for the HRA, I think our council or HRA would be willing to look at those ideas. So appreciate all that input. And I think that's, yeah, let me see, was there one more? We had a couple of folks who were encouraging us to continue through with the small area plan commitment, and I think that'll be something we discuss in the context of when we have the sketch plan review this evening, because there has been a commitment to the small area plan and work to be done in that neighborhood, on that 44-acre area. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that in depth when we get into that matter on the agenda. So let's now go back to the agenda, but we've completed the community comment, and let's go to our city manager to see if he has any responses from the prior meeting and any community comments that were raised there that required some staff research. So, Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had 11 speakers on February 6th for community comment. That's the most we've had in a couple of years. But they really kind of boiled down into five different subject areas. One was, why isn't the city able to share more information about criminal activity or events that have happened in closer to real time? Why doesn't the city engage in community policing? We do, in many respects. Why would we consider a different, a shared-use path planned for Concord Avenue as part of the upcoming project there? We had a number of questions about that. Questions about the tree ordinance and how it works, and what do we protect, and how do we do it? And finally, could we rezone, can the city proactively rezone 6016 Vernon Avenue, the former Kevin Keyes Auto Service, into something different? So all of those questions, we consolidated and aggregated some of the questions that we got in the meeting, but those were the subject areas. And as Jennifer Bennerott said, the responses are easy to find on our website, and I think pretty clear in how we're responding to all these questions. We encourage people to go there and see.
Right.
And we'll do the same for the questions that we got tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Neal.
And we talked about leaving these up for 60 days, 60 or 90 days. So if people want to come back, if they saw something on February 6th, they want to see it in March, they'd be able to do that.
Member Rissler may have an inquiry or a comment, and I think Member Jackson as well.
In regarding the tree ordinance, I know there was a lot of concern that we address this quickly and clear up why letters of credit are not being accepted and people have to put down cash. And I did take a look at the website. When I looked at it, admittedly, that was about two weeks ago, or maybe a week ago, and I didn't see anything that specifically addressed how timely we are going to respond.
It's on there.
So how timely are we going to respond?
How timely are we going to respond to that particular question?
Right. When are we going to clear up whether people can submit letters of credit instead of actual cash, because that seemed to be a big burden? Like, are we going to, in two weeks, will we be, you know, solving this for people?
I would not think that we would have that issue resolved in two weeks. I can tell you that there is an ongoing staff process, and I've participated in parts of it to try to identify some of the questions, concerns around the tree ordinance. We want it to be tough, but we also want people to be able to work within it, too. One of those key public opportunities is tomorrow, actually, is to speak with all the different redevelopers that we deal with. We have a meeting with them tomorrow morning to cover a lot of things, but this is one of the pieces that we're going to get their input on the tree ordinance as well.
If we could get a timeline by at least next month, that would be great.
The timeline will involve a presentation at a work session for council about what does the plan say and how we might propose some changes to it. So I would look for, I'll look for that. We're looking for that date when we can have that work session with you right now.
Any further?
Well, the sooner the better.
Yes.
I mean, this really needs to be addressed ASAP.
We all feel that way. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So do we have a timeline on when the crime map software is going to be updated? Because I know that's something that we've been waiting on. Do we have any sense of that?
Yes, we're estimating sometime within the next 30 days. We're working on some software glitches with that particular aspect of the software package that we currently have, so we're very close. That also will tie into some of the alerting features that we're working on with some existing software that we have in hand, and so we're hoping, again, with that, in the next 30 days, that we'll be able to roll that out to the public and advertise it.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the one thing that I wanted to follow up on, and I'm not quite sure how we would do this, but I didn't want to kind of blow past the comments from the first community comment tonight. So there were two things that were in there. One was understanding what's going on with the incident at Amundson Flats, and there is an investigation there. But then the follow-up question really was geared towards, and I'm paraphrasing, how can we, as a city, ensure that with apartment complexes, how can we ensure that, and these are my words, that they're operating effectively, that issues are being addressed? And I know it's a private enterprise, and so that's the part where I'm not quite sure what role we can play in that. But I do think it warrants us coming back and being able to talk about what our processes, policies, procedures are to address things like that.
Will do. I mean, we are, just in a very short response, is we have tools both at the law enforcement level, at the public health level, because we do license rental units, and also Ms. Hawkinson does some liaison work for us with some of the buildings as well. So we're lucky that we have some tools, and we have engagement opportunities with them, and we do use them.
I think we've also got some good data on some of these issues as well that we can count on the chief for when we get to the point where we're going to talk about it. So...
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for raising that issue. All right. We're going to proceed next to the consent agenda. There's a couple of members that want to move a couple of items off the consent agenda. I think, Member Risher, you had a correction of the minutes, so you want to remove 7A, I think?
No, 7B.
7B? Oh, on the claims, okay. And then, Member Agnew, with 7J, which is potential purchase of professional services for the City Hall roof replacement and the solar PV array that would be on the roof. Is that correct? All right, good. We'll get to that.
Your Honor, there is, though, this proposal to amend the minutes tonight.
Yeah, I saw that. That's why I asked.
In A. And Ms. Lenz, I think you verified this, right? Is this correct?
Yes. We had a resident who wrote in and basically said that they thought that their statements during community comment were slightly misconstrued. And so we do have an outside vendor who takes our minutes and puts it together. We did look at that, and we agreed with two of the comments to basically alter what they said. We tried to maintain the same level of detail, but we thought that those two items that were in this statement were maybe a little bit different than what they spoke of, so we wanted to clarify that.
So are these changes to the minutes considered to be changes in the minutes themselves, or do they require an amendment to the...
I think...
Should we be pulling the minutes, in other words?
Yes, yes. And then we would ask you to approve them as amended with the red line.
All right. Let me ask the question then of council members. With the exception of items A, B, and J, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda in a single motion?
Still moved. A second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the items on the consent agenda with the exception of items 7A, B, and J. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? Let's then go to A. And Ari, I think you've explained those changes. So is there a motion to adopt the minutes in their amended form?
Still moved.
This is for the work session and the regular meeting of the city council on February 6, 2024. I should have clarified that.
I'll make that motion.
Member Jackson moves.
A second.
Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the amended minutes for the work session, the regular session of the city council on February 6, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the amendment stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? And then let's move on to J. No, excuse me, we're going to move to B, which is the payment of claims. And Member Risher had an issue there that she wanted to address.
Well, it was a question that a resident asked, and that was, do the cash disbursements that we approve include electronic payments? And Manager Neil is prepared to respond to that.
Yes, they do.
Very good. Would you care to move the payment of claims as item 7B?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes.
Member Jackson?
Second.
Thank you. Member Risher moves, and Member Jackson seconds the approval of the payment of claims as items 7B. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? And now let's go to J. Member Agnew, you, this is a good one to talk about, I think. It'll be an interesting discussion. So hard to believe this roof is apparently wearing out on City Hall, so we're going to talk about that a little bit. Member Agnew.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is not the first time that we've seen a request for purchase regarding our City Hall roof, and so I know that there are a couple of moving pieces. And so I wanted to use this as an opportunity to look a little bit more holistically of the life cycle of an entire project, and how does this fit into it? So I was hoping we could have a little bit more of an overview of the entire roof replacement project and where we're kind of at in that journey.
Very good. Thank you. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member Agnew. Yes, there have been a number of different projects on this building, and what the mayor was referencing is that I think he and I were up here when we put the roof on this building, and also the solar array that we just took off and we're going to put back on. We do have, I asked Derek Otten, our facilities manager, to join us here tonight. He can talk a little bit about, he's the kind of the project manager of this project. He can talk a little bit about what it is and how it fits into the greater context of improvements to this building.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Yes, so to give you a little bit of background, we had started work on this project in 2022. We hired HGA architects to do a holistic design and overview of the entire building and all of our energy systems throughout. A few of the recommendations they made were to replace the roof and then to replace a underperforming photovoltaic system that we had on there. We went to bid with some design work in 2023. We actually started that project and hired a contractor. Through a number of circumstances, some of them having to do with permitting issues through the building department here, but also some as-built conditions that didn't match up with what the existing plans were from the building in 2004, we kind of had a halt on the project. We went through a number of rounds of discussions with the architect and with the contractor. We determined that our best course of action was to just go forward with some of the exterior improvements, which included tuck pointing of the masonry, and then also some replacement of sealants, and then removal of the photovoltaic, and then actually to pull the remainder of that contract from that contractor and to rebid it. What you're seeing today is actually the redesign of those documents to include some of those as-built discrepancies that we found in the field, as well as breaking off the photovoltaic section of it into a separate contract. These rolled lumped together at one point. And we felt that we'd get better pricing if we split these into two projects versus looking at them as one. So what you're looking at today is really just to continue on with the design documents so that we have a cohesive set of bid documents to bid in the months of February and March, hopefully, and then to start replacing the roof then as soon as spring allows.
So with this breaking out into two separate bids, how are we projecting the overall cost of the project to change?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So we had estimated the overall project to be around $3 million. To date, we've spent about $500,000. Our initial projections are the roof is going to be about $1 million to $1 million and a half for just that portion of the replacement, and then the photovoltaic system is somewhere between $500,000 and $750,000. So we're still going to land within that $3 million budget that we anticipated.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about the new photovoltaic systems that are, how do they differ from what we originally put in?
Yeah, so those are good questions. So one of the things we found out about the existing system was it was underperforming. So it was actually generating about 10% of its expected capacity, and some of that could be, you know, considered the age of the system, so it degrades over time, and then some of it was just the technology has changed. So one of the things that our architectural team recommended was to replace it with new upgraded technology, but also to expand the footprint. We were only using a very small portion of the roof's footprint with the existing system, so this new one will be much larger and have more capacity to generate energy. You know, we had early projections of somewhere around 141 kilovolts is actually what it's going to generate, so it's a pretty substantial system. It's a large chunk of the actual energy that this building uses daily.
So what percent of the building are you estimated will be taken care of by this clean energy?
Somewhere around 50%, if not greater.
Around 50%?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that is variable throughout the year, depending on cloud cover, the seasons, things like that, but that's our initial estimate.
Okay, good. All right, thanks. That prompt any other questions, following questions from council members? Member Agnew, would you care to move the matter?
Just a second.
Oh, Member Jackson, thank you.
So I'm not as familiar with how solar systems work. With the old cells, how are those recycled?
Oh, actually, they were taken off-site and recycled. We do have the paperwork through that. There's companies that produce that. That was a stipulation of the contractor that we hired and their electrical firm was to handle that portion of it. We were very, trying to be very conscious about what happened to those. So if you care to, we can get you that information and pass it along.
Right. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Member Agnew, would you care to move the approval of the request for purchase for professional services for City Hall roof replacement and solar PV array with Hamill Green and Abrahamson, Inc.?
Still moved.
For a second?
Second.
We got a motion by Member Agnew, a second by Member Pierce to approve item 7J, which is the request for purchase for professional services for the City Hall roof replacement and solar PV array. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? All right, that takes care of everything on the consent agenda. And now let's turn to the next portion of the agenda, which is special recognitions and presentations. We just have one item in that portion of the agenda this evening, and that is something called Government Communicators Day, and that's February 24, 2024, coming right up. And I'll read the proclamation, and then the council will act on it. Whereas the role of government communications professions is to inform, educate, and engage their communities; and whereas robust communication in government creates trust and inspires residents to take action and be involved; and whereas government communications creates relationships and calls to action, builds awareness and understanding through storytelling, engage and foster engagement on civic issues, and use all channels to include people in critical decisions; and whereas it is essential to have strong communications in government because it is a foundational element of living in a democracy where citizens have the freedom to make their voice heard; and whereas the City VDIN is proud and has deep gratitude and recognition for government communicators' professionalism, dedication, hard work, commitment, enthusiasm, and sacrifice, now therefore we, the city council of the City VDIN, do hereby proclaim February 24, 2024 as Government Communicators Day, and encourage all residents to thank the members of the city staff who have dedicated their careers to ensure that the City VDIN has effective, impactful, and successful communication strategies that resonate and are relevant for the community. Is there a motion to adopt that proclamation?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Jackson, a second by Member Pierce to adopt the proclamation declaring February 24, 2024 as Government Communicators Day. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? And we have our Director of Communications, Jennifer Bennerott, here with us this evening to accept the proclamation and give us a little bit of information. But before she starts her presentation, I wanted to tell folks, and I meant to talk about this at the onset, but our police and fire were some of the first down to Burnsville to assist. And Director Bennerott went down on Sunday to help with our communications folks with respect to this incident, and she spent the entire day there yesterday as well assisting them. So it's this mutual aid pact that we have informally, just as neighbors, just as you would help somebody in your neighborhood. We leapt at the opportunity to go down and assist our friends and neighbors in Burnsville. So thank you for doing what you did, and I'll pass this proclamation to you, but I'll let you make a presentation first. Director Bennerott.
Thank you. You know, when professionals are trained on how to network, they're often taught how to give an elevator speech. That elevator speech is meant to explain who that person is and what they do. I've had mine personally for a long time, and it's something that I want to reflect on in my personal life and my professional life. And it's simply, I share information to bring people together. That personal goal lines up really well with the city's goals for having a communications department. Our goal as a department is to help other city departments determine appropriate messages for their audiences and do that in the most effective way possible. I wouldn't dare put Scott or any other member of my team on the spot to share their elevator speech, but I can tell you without a doubt that being a government communicator is meaningful service for all of us. It's a true calling. It's fun, but it's also challenging. We are often recognized for our good work by our peers, but communications is subjective, and there are times we don't get it quite right. We're constantly working to improve and help the city in this way. Years ago, some of you might recall, we would have a public hearing, and a resident would say, "This public hearing notice is the first I've heard of this issue." Maybe Mayor Havland, do you remember those days? We took that really personally, and I am so proud. We don't hear that complaint anymore, certainly as often. Now, among other things, we're working with the police department on some additional tools to inform residents more quickly about police incidents, and I'm confident we will have those in place sometime soon. As far as helping our peers in Burnsville, I've always said to members of my team, "There is not any city issue that hasn't happened someplace else." Maybe it's happened differently, but we can learn, we can learn from that. And so I've worked, especially as I've aged and been in this role longer, you know, giving back is really important, sharing what we know, helping others. And I'm proud to have served Burnsville. I'm proud that members of my team help continue to do that today. And really, I'm confident that if that day comes in Edina, they'll be here for us, too. So I want to thank you for your support in recognizing Government Communicators Day, for your support day in and day out of our team. It's just really meaningful recognition to all of us. Thank you.
Well, here's some recognition for you and your team. Thank you.
[applause]
We're going to move on now to reports and recommendations. The first matter there is a donation that we have to accept on behalf of the city by state law. We have to have two-thirds of the council approve a donation to the city, and this happens on a regular basis where organizations and residents of our town are donating in kind or monetarily to different organizations within the city, and I'll tell you about it in just a moment. But is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-18, which accepts donations on behalf of the City VDIN?
Still moved.
Member Pierce moves.
A second.
Member Agnew seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-18, which accepts donations on behalf of the City VDIN. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2024-18, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? So we often have multiple donations to deal with at a city council meeting, and tonight we only have one, but it's really a wonderful donation by the Edina Baseball Association to the Park and Rec Department for fence toppers at the countryside park ballfields. The total is a little over $4,300 from the baseball association, so a very generous gift from them. So we thank them for that, and this information will be posted on the city website. Next matter in this portion of the agenda, and there are four items to deal with in this portion of the agenda, is potential approval of the proposed application for the 2024, what we call the Urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Program Funds, the CDBG funds, as they're known, and authorizing the execution of a sub-grantee agreement. And our affordable housing development manager, Stephanie Hawkinson, has this matter, and we look forward to this conversation this evening. This was something we had in front of us for a public hearing, I think, a couple of weeks ago, so...
Correct.
Manager Hawkinson, welcome.
Thank you. So this is a continuation of requests to adopt Resolution 2024-10 with regards to our community development block grant annual allocation. Within this would be $95,754 that'd be allocated to homes within reach, and $35,000 that would stay with Hennepin County for the home rehabilitation program. We continued this from the last meeting. We closed the public hearing on the 11th. There were no comments on Better Together.
Very good. Any questions for Manager Hawkinson? All right. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-10, which would approve the application for the 2024 Urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Program Funds and authorizing the execution of the sub-grantee agreement?
Still moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Risher seconds the adoption of the motion stated. Any further conversation? Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? Thank you. And next, we have potential approval of the 2024 board and commission appointments. I think all of you know, from being involved in the city over time or living here, that we have several boards and commissions that are advisory to the city council, and residents like all of us serve on those boards and commissions. And we have that embarrassment of riches in Edina. We had 18 positions open, I think it was, and 57, originally 67 applicants, and just some wonderful people stepping forward, wanting to serve, and so it was difficult making decisions about appointments to various... And so it was difficult making decisions about appointments to various boards and commissions. And we broke ourselves up into teams so that we could interview everybody in an effective way. But Manager Neal, he was in on every single interview, and now I'm going to turn to Manager Neal and let him handle the proposal with respect to the board and commission members.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you mentioned, we had a nice turnout in terms of applicants this year. We ended up actually interviewing 48 candidates over five different nights of interviews, and then we also had the selection night where we made the selections that are in front of you, the selection recommendations that are in front of you tonight. These are for new terms on our boards and commissions that start on March 1. So the start date follows pretty quickly from kind of your appointment to where they are officially members of those groups. Depends on where their meeting falls, of course, during March, but their term starts on March 1. Terms are generally, for most of these folks, three years. There are some who are filling out the unexpired terms of somebody who left during the year, so they may have shorter terms. We also have nine folks who did not get appointed to different boards and commissions are put on the bench, all right? And so we've had more folks leave commissions before their term is up. When that happens, we have this bench of people that we can go to and then bring their names back to the council for formal appointment. So that's where we stand today, and we need, typically, we do this by motion that approves the entire slate of appointees.
All right. Anybody have questions? Any council member have questions for Manager Neal? Is there a motion to adopt a slate of advisory board and commission appointments as recommended by Manager Neal?
So moved.
A second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the slate of candidates embodied in the memo that we got from staff as part of this particular matter. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Member Jackson.
So I just want to thank everybody who applied. The interviews were outstanding, and there was a comment at one point in time from one of our commissioners said, you know, "I felt like they were interviewing me. They were so impressive," and I felt that way with every interview. So I just wanted to thank everybody for stepping forward. This is a great opportunity to serve the community and get an in-depth experience with it, and wow, we have a great community, and this is always such a reaffirmation of that.
Thank you. Other comments from council members? We all, I think we all had a great experience interviewing people in our community that love living here, and a lot of them just in the two-to-five-year residency range that were young, in their 30s and 40s, and just wanted to get more involved in community. So it was a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful experience. So, all right, we've got a motion, a second, to adopt the slate of candidates for boards and commissions. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adopting the board and commission members as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And then the last matter tonight in this portion of the agenda is sketch plan review for 5780 Lincoln Drive. And as we mentioned, this was something the Planning Commission did last week, I think. And so we're going to have Kerry Teague, our community development director, introduce the topic, and then we're going to have a presentation by the potential applicant, Sol Hem, and then we're going to have some conversation with the council about things that the council members have, I think are important to be discussing, pro and con. So go ahead, Director Teague.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is a site you're familiar with. This is actually the third time that this developer has brought forward a sketch plan for development on the site. Located on the far west side of town, at the Lincoln and London Dairy off-ramp off of 169, the site is zoned planned industrial district. Primary uses in that district are office and industrial. It's guided in our comprehensive plan for office residential. The density range within that land use category is between 20 and 75 units an acre. Primary uses that are listed within that category include office, attached, or multifamily housing. Secondary uses are limited retail and service uses. That land use category talks about vertical mixed use is encouraged. That's something that staff has had conversation with the developers since their original plan in 2021. Part of their not having a retail-type component is, in adding a restaurant or a coffee shop, adds more parking spaces. Surface parking has been an issue with that, and it also drives more traffic to the site. Secondly, with, and that was with the market rate project, with the all affordable project that's proposed basically the last two sketch plans, difficulty in getting financing for a mixed-use type of project. In 2023, when they brought that second sketch plan forward, the proposal was for 141 units, again, all affordable. It was to be done in two phases. The first phase was 89 units in a five-story building. The plan before you this evening that the applicant will get into more detail is just one phase. It's 89 units. They've reduced the height from five stories to three stories. There are eight townhomes located along Lincoln, and again, all of the units would be at 50% AMI or below. There's a rezoning required here. A couple of options that the applicant has talked about is a rezoning from the PID to PRD-4, which is kind of, it's our standard zoning for high-density residential, or a PUD. Again, because it's rezoning, the council has complete discretion whether to approve or deny. The applicant would be seeking whether it's either variances through the standard zoning of PRD-4 or flexibility through the PUD, as outlined in the compliance table in your memo, are in regard to setbacks, units per acre, building coverage, usable area, and floor area ratio. PUD has been the tool that we've used for 100% affordable housing projects, the Sound, the Amundson Project, and the 4040 70th. That's where, right within the ordinance, we can write in the requirement for the affordable housing. A couple of issues, one that's already been brought up, is the small-area plan. The city is committed to doing that. Currently, we are out for an RFP to solicit a consultant to help lead that project. That closes the end of Friday this week. We are also out soliciting members of the working group. That is currently posted on the website, and that would close, it is March 8. So we're still looking to fill those positions, and ultimately, the Planning Commission decides both of those. So that will happen. Typically, we do advise a developer to wait till that small-area plan is done. Typically, that does happen. However, in this case, the potential applicant has received up to $27 million in funding, and they say that could go away if it's not moved forward this year. The city can't prevent an application from being made. The city would have 120 days to act upon a formal application. If the city doesn't take action, it's automatically approved. The second issue is also a big one, and that's in regard to sewer capacity. The site doesn't have the capacity to serve the site from within the city of Edina. However, the city of Minnetonka has indicated a potential to hook into their system temporarily in a five-to-seven-year range. That would have to be a formal request of the city to Minnetonka to ask for that connection. They have some capacity issues of their own as the Opus Park is developing out, and they have a lot of potential sites that needs that sewer capacity as well. So that's an overview of the issues, and with that, I will invite the development team to come up and make their presentation and introduce their team.
Yeah, let's wait, let's hold Mr. Dixit for a moment, in case anybody has questions for Director Teague, and I think Member Rissler has her hand up right now.
I do have questions, and I would request that we get the future land use map projected on the screen so everybody can see it. We don't have that? Okay.
The request was for the categories?
You know what? I have the printout, and then these are the sheets that have the verbiage for office residential, and I'd like people to be able to see those. Okay, all right. The map would be helpful. What we just heard was a partial reading of the future land use categories that are in the comprehensive plan. This is a chart that you can find in Chapter 3 of the comprehensive plan. And one of my biggest concerns is process. This language was not included in our packet. It was not included in the packet for the Planning Commission. It was not included in our packet way back when, when we awarded $2.5 million as HRA people. And so what I'm very concerned about is we're not thinking at the very beginning about what our comprehensive plan expects. And I know there's a lot of talk about the small-area plan, but we also need to respect our comprehensive plan. And our comprehensive plan does say, "For office residential, transitional areas along major thoroughfares or between higher-intensity districts and residential districts. Many existing highway-oriented commercial areas are anticipated to transition to this more mixed-use character. Primary uses are offices, attached, or multifamily housing; secondary uses, limited retail, and service uses. Not including big-box retail, limited industrial, fully enclosed institutional uses, parks, and open spaces. Vertical mixed use should be encouraged and may be required on larger sites." I don't know if we could move in so we can get a closer view of all of that pink that is to be office residential, but one of my biggest concerns is why is this not just routinely being included as a basic screening? Because it is basic information. And so if at the very beginning it was understood mixed use was expected, I think we'd be looking at a very different project. And the reason why it matters so much, the largest area to the south, you've got the Lodon. It was created before the comprehensive plan was completed. You don't have mixed use there. You go up to the little strip mall or the pizza places, that is much smaller than the site that we're talking about. And so if we set this precedent to say, "Hey, you don't have to have mixed use at all on this site," we're also opening it up to say, "Hey, that strip mall area could be completely residential." That's also true for the piece of land that is above. And so, you know, and the thing is, we are required by the Met Council to produce comprehensive plans. It involves a lot of taxpayer expense. It involves a lot of community members coming forward. And so it is really, and I tried at the HRA meeting to get an answer as to what is a larger site. I really tried. It didn't work at all. And so now here I am, still wondering, what is a larger site? And so if a developer gets a pass on this requirement at the very beginning and never even has to think about it, I think that's a problem. And the other thing is, as you look at the amenities around the area, there's not a lot there. What if you could have, like, a little small store or something, so people could buy milk or peanut butter, whatever? You know, what a difference that would make, because you can't easily get to a grocery store. Although you can, it's interesting, you go on Google Maps and try to figure out how to get by walking or biking. You can bike to Jerry's pretty quickly, but if you want to take a bus, it's going to take you like an hour and 20 minutes, because you got to go to the Uptown Station to get the correct bus to get you to Jerry's. But it just seems that this whole process has been very dismissive of our comprehensive plan. And the other thing is, I feel like this is really pitted and made this about as controversial as it could possibly be, and it just, this doesn't have to be this way. It could have been presented, I think, in a way that made affordable housing on this site less contentious. But from the very beginning, it just seemed as if, okay, this is the way it's going to be, and so much for your comprehensive plan. So that's what I have right now, but I really am very disappointed in the whole process. Thank you.
All right, let's ask Director Teague why he has that interpretation of the comprehensive plan that seems to be a variance with what you think it says.
Yeah, so the map is included with sketch plans. We typically don't dive into a lot of detail. The language does say vertical mixed use should be encouraged, and we've talked to the developer about that since they've been looking at the site. And it may be required on larger sites. Councilmember Rissler is correct. We don't have a definition for larger sites. Whether a two-acre, two-and-a-half-acre site is considered a larger site, I guess, is up for debate. Like, the children's site to the south, where they did the apartments and removed part of the, you know, that's a 25-acre site, was rezoned for mixed development, so that's considered, it's not vertical mixed use, but it has office and residential within that zoning district. This is a rezoning, is still required. This language would be considered as part of any formal application if you feel that the site has to be a mixture of uses, a vertical mixed use. You could make that requirement, or it could be part of the basis for a denial. Again, you'd have complete discretion to approve or deny.
I do feel, moving forward, we need to have the language along, we can't just have the map that shows the color that we're considering rezoning to. We need to have the language that accompanies it. That's basic.
Would you walk back through, Director Teague? You said that there was a possibility of using PUD or PRD to change the zoning. The distinctions between those two?
Yeah, so with the PUD, we're writing the zoning standards, you know, the setbacks, the parking requirements, floor area ratio, density, we're writing that right into the code. When the comprehensive plan was done, really, this goes back to 2008, the idea was, in providing these broad land use categories, should a developer have an idea and come in and make a proposal? The idea was to have a more give-and-take, where the council has more discretion to approve or deny a project based on what the comprehensive plan says, in the case of the Southdale District, the design guidelines. But the structure of the comprehensive plan was written to provide the council with that ability to say yes or no to a proposal. So they are very broad. They're, you know, as we've talked about in the last year or two, maybe we do want to get more specific and create zoning districts that are more in alignment with the comprehensive plan. In doing that, it, you know, takes out that negotiation, but it sets a clear expectation for developers, residents, what might occur.
All right, that explains PUD, but then how about PRD?
Yeah, so the PRD, as noted in the compliance table, there's quite a number of variances to the requirements. They would be seeking setback variances essentially from all outlines. There's a calculation to determine density in the PRD district. Based on running those calculations, they would only be allowed to do 31 units per acre, and they're proposing 34. They could build, it's in the 75 units total on the site, based on that calculation. There's a building coverage variance. The PRD requires a 30% coverage. This is about 35%. There's also a usable area requirement. Believe that was likely established many, many years ago to make sure there's adequate outdoor space for tenants, residents of the facility. And that usable area excludes setbacks, so it's essentially green space, active space. They would be required 35,000 square feet using that calculation, and what's proposed here is just over 8,000 square feet, so that's a pretty significant variance there as well. Also, floor area ratio, .5 is required. This is at about .93.
All right, so, but at the end of the day, because the potential project doesn't fit within the existing zoning code, it would have to be rezoned, and it would be the choice of the applicant if they did decide to come forward, whether they wanted to go the PUD versus PRD route, and we may hear some conversation from council members about that, those alternative pathways tonight.
Yeah, that's correct.
Everybody in this room is interested in hearing those.
Yeah, and the Planning Commission talked a little bit about which to use, and they were split on that notion, whether it should be PRD-4 or PUD.
They were split on that notion?
Yep.
Okay, so then let's go back and talk a little bit about this. So then let's go back and talk a little bit about this sanitary sewer interceptor line, if you will. I don't know if you know if that's the correct term, but if, I've seen a letter from the city of Minnetonka that said they would do something temporarily, but in the five to seven-year range, but we'd have to pay the cost of hookup for that. And so has there been any estimate of the cost of, of doing that on a temporary basis for five to seven years? And who would pay the cost of that?
Yeah, the cost would be paid by the developer. There's been a wide range of estimates on what it would cost, from 1 million to 10 million. We think maybe it's closer to the 2 million range, but further study would have to be done to pinpoint that exact cost. But it would be borne by the developer.
All right, so let's just say hypothetically, seven years from now, the city of Minnetonka has got so much growth going on out there in Opus because of the proximity to the light rail, that they say, "We can't, we can't keep doing this." And so, and even if they did, what would be the cost after that temporary usage to be able to create the kind of sanitary sewer system that not only this development might need, but anything that would be there in that 44 acres that was recommended to be part of a overall small area plan study? Does that make sense?
It does. That we would need to do a little more study. I would look to engineering to think there's different options on how that might occur, something that's paid for by the city, or maybe it's a connection here within. Maybe I'll ask Mr. Bittner to provide any more detail.
Mr. Bittner? Can you offer us any insight on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Russ Bittner, Engineering Services Manager. I'm filling in for Chad, so thanks for bearing with me as I attempt to fill his shoes. We did look a couple at sanitary flow in this area in a couple of different ways, and we've got a comprehensive sanitary sewer model for the whole city. We looked at several scenarios. I think the 44 acres, I don't have that one in my mind, but maybe a smaller area, about nine acres for the Lincoln Drive area. Basically, the whole sanitary trunk line from this Lincoln Drive area all the way down to Highway 100 is already at capacity. So we do see needs there, and the business case for getting there, based on what we see as a pretty small amount of units, is pretty tough. So I think the options going into Minnetonka are probably our best business case, but I think I need a little bit more clarity on what the future densities of this area are going to look like.
So what I hear you saying or implying is that the small area plan could provide that guidance?
Yeah.
On what, what might be possible there, whether, even with the small area plan, whether there's a business case for trying to expand sanitary sewer capacity in that larger area or smaller area?
Thanks. Yeah, just my reaction is, I think we can roll with whatever direction the council takes on this one, whether it's using the developer's effort as a, you know, springboard for our own, or leading the planning effort based on your decisions in a small area plan. We're ready to react in either case.
Okay, thank you. Member Pierce.
Just to contribute to that, those comments from Mr. Bittner. I mean, one of the things that we heard when we visited with our colleagues in Minnetonka was that they've had an Auar for this, for that entire area regarding the future development, and that the development they've seen has, to date, has outpaced what was in their plan. So they're concerned, justifiably concerned, about the possibility of giving some of this kind of very precious sanitary sewer capacity to, to us. There are ways that we could deal with that. It's, you know, calling this a temporary connection to their system, that's not really the right way to think about it. But what it does mean is that if, if that system reaches its, its capacity, they're going to look to us to expand their capacity for them with the amount of capacity that we consumed back in 2024, when this was put together. And they, they're also very clear, I think, to us in, in the meeting that we had with them, that should we go that direction, they would, they would help us put it together, but they would want that long-term agreement understood and approved by both city councils before they would, before they would put much staff or consulting time into, into creating an agreement.
What's your understanding of the long-range potential cost? Or the cost for that, for that, I'll call it a permanent solution, redevelopment?
It's still, it still doesn't have a very good level of precision. I think Mr. Teague said one to 10.
For the temporary fix.
I wish, yeah, for the temporary fix. No idea what the permanent fix is, but.
Yep. Member Pierce.
So I think you, you covered part of what I was going to ask. So I interpreted the letter, I think, differently, but pretty close to what you were saying. I interpreted it to mean that there's, so the five to seven is temporary. There's a cost for that, that Edina would bear, but that's temporary. And so then we need to have our study done in order to understand what the permanent solution was. I kind of read in there that we needed both of those things. And then from a cost perspective, the city would cover that, plus whatever the permanent solution is. And I think about it in, in those terms, like I ignore the developer. It's our decision as a city to then say, "All right, it's $7 million or whatever it is," and then go to the developer to say, "Hey, if you want to do that, you need to foot up $7 million." So that was the broad way I thought about it. And then the other thing, this is always complicated, and so the, but this is how I think about planning, right? Comprehensive plan is here, right? It's a 10- to 20-year study that just broadly says, "This is what we want for our city." Small area plans should be within the scope of that comprehensive plan, but they dictate more detail about what we want to do within a particular neighborhood. And so as we talk about this particular area, we could still do a small area plan that would say, "Yeah, we still want to do some housing affordability in some way." We can still do that, but it would be through, it could be through that small area plan process. And so the, the two work together. It's not, there's not, you know, complete one, and then the other is something else that stands aside. And the way I am thinking about this, it's worth it to understand, right? The comprehensive plan is like an umbrella. Small area plans are underneath that. Is that, that fair?
I think that that is definitely fair. There's still that land use component to it, but it, it does narrow down in focus, so.
Yeah, and, and so I say that because I still get a chuckle out of this when, we live in Highlands, and so we drive through Parkwood Knowles a lot. You see the Knowles rezoning signs. And what's going to happen here, regardless of this project? Do a small area plan? We're going to rezone. And so you don't actually want to say, "Don't rezone," because what we're going to do is, if we move forward with a small area plan, we're going to have a conversation with the community, with others involved, to figure out what we want to do. And that may challenge some of our current land use definitions, and we will rezone to enable what we want in that small area plan. So we'll still, we'll still need to do that. So the thing is not for us to say, "Don't do any rezoning." What we're trying to do is make sure what we want to happen in that neighborhood has the right input from the community, from the city, from others, so that we can have a small area plan that everybody can stand behind.
Other questions, comments from council members? To kind of segue off that and go back to where I was before, it strikes me that with the temporary solution that Minnetonka has offered, really isn't any solution at all. That it, that it, that it just delays the inevitable. And without a small area plan, to know what your proposed density would be based upon what people that work on the small area plan decide it should be, it may or may not be feasible to change what we've got there right now in terms of sewer capacity. It may stay just the way it is. But, but to have the developer stand up and say, "Well, I'll pay five or seven million right now, or 2 million to get that sewer connection," that doesn't do us any good. I mean, it just, it just delays the inevitable and potentially leaves us holding the bag, where we get to a situation where we decide, we, we are contemplating doing something for a permanent solution, and it's, as I've heard numbers from all of you, it could be 20, 30, 40 million dollars. Boy, you've got to have quite a bit of density to warrant that kind of an expenditure, as member, as Mr. Bittner says, the business case would have to be pretty compelling. So I, I don't know. Just, I'm kind of eager to hear what the applicant has to say, but nonetheless, underpinning all of this is quite a bit of interesting information. Manager Neal.
I think the key sentence in, in the Minnetonka letter to us was, "However," comma, "Minnetonka cannot commit to a permanent connection until the completion of the small areas study, which is crucial to comprehensively understanding the area's requirements."
Yeah, right, what Member Pierce remembered, consistent with what Member Pierce remembered. Now, Member Rissler.
Back to, and I really appreciate Member Pierce's comments and, you know, talking about these neighborhood areas and the import of small plants. And I do want to underscore, you know, we talk about mixed-use, but when we're talking about a neighborhood node, and we're saying we're going to take some of the land and it's going to go to a purely residential development, that alters the node quite a bit. And I think, you know, because you're used to having industrial office, and then that shrinks it. And I've seen this happen in my neighborhood, Wood Dale Valley View, where we have three parcels that are commercially zoned, but they have purely residential projects on them. And so, you know, it just seems like, are we going to start following our code and our plans and that? Or are we just going to allow these spaces to shrink? And I, you know, when you talk about home values, and you talk about walkability, and you talk about neighborhoods, and building places where people can come together, I think it is important to note that, we can use the term mixed-use, but if it's shrinking a node, that's a big deal. And so when we talk about what is a large parcel, if it's going to residential purely, that can have a really big impact on a node. And then if you, you know, and these apartments, my understanding is that's one of the more financially feasible things to put up. And so, you know, the argument that it's too expensive to do mixed-use, I, I have a problem with that, because we should be valuing our nodes and our neighborhood areas and places where people can walk and all of that.
Even without that language in the letter, talking about a small area plan being a predicate to a discussion about a permanent solution through Minnetonka, assuming that weren't there, you still face the issue of, seven years from now, if the developer paid for the improvements to the, on a temporary basis, and seven years from now, Minnetonka says, "Well, that's it, fellows. You're going to have to put in a permanent connection, and now that permanent connection is tens of millions of dollars. And the only thing we have on that property is this 89 units of housing." They can't, they can't handle that. Why, you know, we can't handle that. You know, it just, it seems like it's really a difficult situation. And I'm, and I'm sensitive to the, well, I guess I'm not sensitive to the idea that there's a big grant out there. I mean, that's, we're, we're going to do our work regardless of that, that grant. We're going to do our analysis here. So if there's no other questions for Director Teague or comments?
I would just, I would just add to your comment. The, the other option is that we still need to do a small area plan regardless of that, right? We're going to do that. However, you could say we need to do the small area plan with that as a constraint, the sewer capacity as a constraint. And then what that would mean is the, the group that's doing a small area plan then would say, "Well, we can't do a seven-story or three-story apartment complex. We can only do these types of things because we're limited by the capacity of the sewer." And I think either one of those options, what that range of options is all, those are all viable approaches moving forward. And I, I had heard you make a comment similar to that, and I just wanted to kind of put it in that, that context.
Okay. All right. All right. Should we bring up Mr. Dixit? Mr. Dixit, on your way up here, I want to, I want to compliment your company. Item seven, what was it? Seven, it's at the very beginning. Anyway, what, what? Seven C. What you, what you suggested, for folks in the audience, you wouldn't have known this because it was on the consent agenda, but we had a couple of years ago, folks come to us that have, live in Edina, that had kids that had disabilities, that they wanted to do a, a disabled housing project at St. Peter's Lutheran at 54th and France. And it just, the council determined it didn't work. And so they've been thinking about, well, where, where, where could their kids live in Edina, independently or semi-independently? And in conjunction with work with Solheim on the, I think it's a Finch, which is workforce housing, primarily 50% AMI and higher, you had an affordable housing component in there of like 28 units? And you came to us after meeting with all those parents of, of people that, you know, parents of, of kids with disabilities and challenges, and you, you asked us to agree that you would basically abandon the affordable housing 28 units and instead use it for disabled housing to accommodate all these parents. And maybe we're simplifying what took place here, but it, it struck me that that was really, after your company seeing what was going on, the challenges these parents had and wanting to keep their kids close by, that you helped them solve a problem. So I think that's something that deserves some, some attention and a, and a shout-out, frankly, in my opinion. So thanks, thanks for that.
Thank you, Mr. Rissler. We appreciate that. And just to clarify, what we've done through the amendment is given priority for those 28 affordable units. There are still 28 affordable units for households at 50% AMI or below, and, but the IDD population, adults with intellectual or developmental disabilities, have a priority for those units. But they still have to qualify for the affordability component. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, all right. Well, this is a different matter, so here we go.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you. And my name is Amol Dixit with Solheim Companies. I live in Minneapolis, and I really appreciate this opportunity to be with all of you again to review our revised sketch plan for Lincoln on the Creek. And we appreciate the conversation that just happened as well, because I think it informs what we really need to focus on tonight. And so I have a prepared presentation, which I'll go through, but I think, I think it's clear what the, the hot-button topics are for this. So, you know, we are very much looking forward to getting your feedback, your questions at the end of this, but we also would love your thoughts on two specific questions. One is, do you have any guidance for us on whether we should pursue a PUD or a PRD four with variances? And then the second question is, do you support a land use application for this project? And if not, what are those lingering concerns? Director Teague has done a great job of laying out the facts of this project and the site. So we're just going to reinforce the main points and add some context to this project. We've surrounded ourselves with a development team that has decades of experience in affordable housing, and many of those folks are here tonight. Jason Lord from Solheim, Mindy Michael from Cos Wilson Architects, from our property management partner, Property Solutions and Services, we have Asher Gavsey, and from our service provider, Touchstone Mental Health, we have Ellie Skelton.
Thanks for being here. Welcome.
So we do want to start by taking a look back at the evolution and timeline of this project, which really does date back to 2021. That's when we worked with city staff to present a 195-unit That's when we worked with city staff to present a one-hundred-and-ninety-five-unit, five-story market rate project that was in line with comp plan guidance. As Director Teague mentioned, the comp plan guides this site twenty to seventy-five units. So the one-hundred-and-ninety-five units put it exactly at seventy-five units per acre, so right at the high end of that comp plan guidance. We presented the sketch plan to both city council and planning commission, and due to market conditions, we chose to not proceed with a land use application. That's when we pivoted and re-engaged city staff to work on a workforce housing model. Based on the feedback from the market rate project, we originally planned a five-story model, and that's what we brought forward last year, one-hundred-and-forty-one total units in two phases. Now, these past nine months, there have been two primary work streams, lining up the funding and the city approval process. So what you see here, the funding milestones are on the bottom of this timeline, while the city approval milestones are along the top of the timeline. So last May, as you sure remember, we held an in-person neighborhood meeting and followed that up with sketch plan reviews with both the planning commission and the city council. And given the feedback we received in those forums, we decided against submitting a formal land, land application, land use application last summer, and instead revisited certain aspects of the project while continuing to go through the funding process. So in June, we received the funding commitment from the HRA contingent upon site plan approval. Now, there have been some questions around the funds that Edina has committed to on a contingent basis. So just to clarify, the two-and-a-half million dollars in funding, it makes up six-and-a-half percent of our total project, and none of it would be new taxpayer dollars. A new TIF district is not being created. The source of the two-and-a-half million dollars would be the Southdale Pool TIF district, or TIF dollars, which are taxes already generated by developments in the Southdale District. And by law, these funds can only be used for affordable housing projects in Edina. So all increased tax revenue from Lincoln on the Creek would go to the Edina Tax Authority. So going back to the timeline, in July, we submitted the applications for two important sources of funding, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, or MHFA, and the Met Council. Now, to re-ground in the funding process for affordable housing, all the major public funders have one funding cycle per year. So the timeline and the deadlines are really dictated to us. So for both MHFA and Met Council, applications are due in mid-July, and then decisions are announced in December. One, we've talked about the small area plan, and as mentioned in Manager Hawkinson's report, which is in the agenda packet, the small area plan was authorized months after we had already submitted MHFA and Met Council funding applications. And as you can see, about two years after we had originally begun exploring redevelopment on this site. So given that there is no moratorium on development during the small area plan, and given the very strict timing requirements from MHFA, we will parallel path our project with the small area plan, as we would lose the MHFA funding if we were to wait till the small area plan is complete. In December, we were awarded nine percent tax credits and an eight-point-four-million-dollar deferred loan from the MHFA, along with nearly two million dollars from Met Council. The nine percent tax credits are the most competitive and scarce funding source. And between these tax credits and the deferred loan, MHFA funding makes up over sixty percent of our project costs. So with the funding coming together, we have shifted our focus back to the city approval process. So we are going through the sketch plan review process for a second time so that we can have these discussions, get more additional feedback before formally submitting an application with the city. On February twelfth, we hosted a community meeting via Zoom to make it as accessible and transparent to as many people as possible, and we had almost one hundred participants. And then last week, February fourteenth, we presented to Planning Commission. We've talked about the sewer. I just wanted to overlay the timeline with some of the sewer conversations we've had and some of the milestones. So when we brought the project forward in 2021 as a market rate proposal, sewer engineering study was initiated by the city. Then in 2022, the possibility of connecting into Minnetoka's system was identified, and this concept was approved by the Met Council. So fast forward to last July, when we included the two million dollars in our budget for our MHFA funding applications. And that was based on guidance from an engineering study. We understand that the sewer capacity is key to unlocking this, any redevelopment on this site. Councilmember Pierce says, as you mentioned in the earlier discussion, just as there's going to be rezoning in that neighborhood, the reality is there's no capacity for any new development currently from a sewer standpoint. So that's another point to make, that sewer capacity will need to be unlocked in some way. So, you know, based on our experience with other projects, sewer capacity is a normal part of this development process. Based on that experience, based on our specific knowledge of this situation, this project, we are optimistic that there's a solution to be had, both technically and financially. And I expect we'll have further conversation about that. I wanted to share this slide. I mentioned that the MHFA award, and this is a map of all 2023 MHFA awards in Hennepin and Ramsey Counties. As you can see, Lincoln on the Creek is the only MHFA awarded project in the Southwest Metro. We believe this reinforces both the need for this type of housing in the Southwest Metro, but also the opportunity Edina has to continue leading the way in the affordable housing space through a public-private partnership. So as I mentioned, we shared our original sketch plan for the affordable housing project last year. We heard the feedback, we heard the concerns, and we believe we've addressed the majority of these concerns with our revised sketch plan. So the original project had two phases, one-hundred-and-forty-one total units, with this eighty-nine-unit building being phase one. Several council members shared concerns about the second phase. So the biggest change we've made is eliminating phase two. And now that our project is just the one phase, it has a direct impact on all these other areas you see on the slide. Several council members mentioned that the massing should be more in line with the Loden, with the nearby Loden Apartments. And since we're able to utilize the entire two-point-five-nine acres for eighty-nine units, we're able to reduce the height to three stories, or about forty feet. This is one story shorter than the Loden. Setbacks, we now have twenty-five, at least twenty-five-foot setbacks all around the site, and we're able to double the setback at that key southeast intersection. Also, the increased setbacks allow us to potentially preserve more mature trees. Councilmember Jackson, you had expressed concerns over the playground not being in a safe location, and the need for more of a courtyard feel with green space. So we've significantly increased the amount of green space and have created a courtyard with a more protected playground. We've added a sidewalk along Lincoln Drive to provide safe access to the crosswalk at that southeast intersection of the site. The sewer connection, we've touched on, and I'm sure we'll touch on again. And Councilmember Pierce, you introduced the idea of townhomes, and we know there's a broader conversation happening around housing affordability across the spectrum of housing options. This sparked two updates to our project. Number one, we've converted the eight four-bedroom units into townhomes. And number two, we've begun discussions with MHFA about the possibility of converting those townhomes into owned, ownership townhomes after the initial fifteen-year affordability period. Also, adding these townhome units allows us to address something on Councilmember Agnew's wish list, which was to step up the density towards the highway. And Mindy will highlight that in an upcoming slide. Two other concerns that are not listed on this slide, but that have been raised, were in the areas of worker protections and the management and operations of this building. On the subject of worker protections, we had a productive meeting with Councilmember Jackson, in which we brought in general contractor partners and discussed ways to ensure accountability, checks and balances on the job site. We also discussed the possibility of working with the city on a policy to enforce these worker protection measures. On the operations and management of the building, we had meetings with two members of the Edina Housing Foundation, Bernadette Horning and Jeff Huggett, in which Ellie from Touchstone and Asher from PSS shared their plans to ensure residents have the support they need and the property is well-managed and maintained. Mayor Hovland, you've asked a very fair question whenever we've connected. What does Edina get in return for the funds it has committed on a contingent basis? So in addition to the eighty-nine units of affordable housing, here are four ways in which new housing developments, developments bring value to a community, and specifically the value that Lincoln on the Creek will bring to Edina. So public and pedestrian bike paths. You can see on the table here that we, there are currently about two-hundred-and-fifty feet of paths at the site. That will nearly quadruple with our revised sketch plan. As points of reference, we've included the increased paths that we have created, or will have created, both at the Fred and the Finch. Tree coverage, this is a topic that came up in last week's HRA meeting. You can see here that we will increase tree coverage by fifty percent at Lincoln on the Creek. Watershed protections, we plan on investing about eight-hundred-thousand dollars to implement modern watershed best practices that aren't required on existing sites. And last but certainly not least, property tax revenue. So we anticipate Lincoln on the Creek will increase the tax revenue on this site by thirty-five to forty thousand dollars a year. And as a reminder, since we are not creating a new TIF district, this is revenue that goes to the Edina Tax Authority. One seed that we wanted to plant on this topic, or in this area, with the additional thirty-five to forty thousand dollars in tax revenue, we are, we are willing to create an abatement increment to put in a city of Edina escrow that could pay into a fund for future maintenance or upgrades for this sewer district. Again, we have budgeted for the immediate improvements needed. This is an idea for how to pre-fund improvements that may come down the road as a result of the small area plan. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mindy Michael from Cos Wilson Architects.
Good now? Okay, thank you. I will try and be, oh, excuse me, Mindy, Mindy Michael with Cos Wilson Architects. As was touched on earlier, we've reduced from one, or from two phases as previously proposed, taller building and such, reduced the height. The slide to the left shows where, what we had presented back in June of 2023, and on the right is the concept plan that we are presenting before you now. We've reduced the height of the building so that we've got eighty-one units of affordable apartments to the west and southern portion of the, of the site, three stalls, or excuse me, three stories above a full garage of underground parking. And then to the east along Lincoln, we've got eight units of four-bedroom, two-level townhomes, each with their own enclosed parking garage. Across the entire site, as noted, we have eighty-nine total units of workforce housing with a density of thirty-four units per acre. This is very similar to what's at the Loden. I believe their density is at about thirty-six units per acre. Our three-story apartment building has an average height of about forty feet, and the two-story townhomes, again, as noted, were four bedrooms. The overall site onsite parking and enclosed parking results in a net one-point-two-six parking spots per resident unit. And in the apartment building, we've got amenities provided with a community room, fitness room, and the courtyard that was noted earlier, kind of in the central area of the site that's protected and shielded by the positioning of the buildings. Right there, we've got also a U.S. Green Building Standard Silver Certification targeted for the project. Overall, along the entire site, you've got the opportunities to bring families together, a place for the kids to play outside in that playground area noted otherwise, or previously. We've got those two-story townhomes lining Lincoln Drive with a friendly pedestrian presence up along that sidewalk that we're proposing. You've got great access to the Nine Mile Creek Trail, providing biking, walking, running opportunities for residents here and elsewhere in the community, and preservation of a lot of the street trees that are there are going to be targeted, as well as supplementing that with the future landscape plan. We've included a few renderings to show a little bit about the scale of the proposed project and kind of how it fits in with the surrounding area. Right towards the middle, what you see in kind of those brown rooftops are the three-story building in the kind of background, and the two-story townhomes a little bit in the foreground, and how those relate to the condo building across one-sixty-nine, the kind of office and industrial areas to the kind of north, or image northwest, northeast, excuse me, and then the existing townhomes to the south. This angle shows you a little bit more about how, again, it's relating to the townhomes across the creek, across Lincoln, as well as the shops across Lundon Dairy, and then the Loden up to the image northwest. This next image gives you a sense of scale, both in terms of how far apart buildings are to one another, as well as their height and the relative topography changes in the area. The top section that you can see here cuts through the three-story apartment building on the far left, progressing to this two-story proposed townhomes, Lincoln Drive immediately adjacent to the Nine Mile Creek, and then the existing townhomes to the farther right. As you can see, the townhomes existing are brought in scale with the proposed townhomes that we are showing along Lincoln. And then the bottom image is kind of cutting in the other direction, showing you how this site kind of relates to the shops across Lundon Dairy, and then the Loden on the far right there, which is four stories in comparison. And then with that, I think I'm all.
So up until now, we've been talking about site and the buildings, as we should, as this is a sketch plan review. But I do want to switch gears and just spend a minute talking about the people that will benefit most from this development, that's the residents. So sixty-six of the eighty-nine total units will be for households at or below fifty percent AMI, and the remaining twenty-three units will be for households at the thirty percent AMI or below level. If we were to go forward with this, those twenty-three units at the thirty percent AMI level would more than double the number of thirty percent AMI units in Edina since the 2030 goals were adopted. To put these AMI levels in, into perspective, at the fifty percent AMI level, a one-person household is earning forty-three-and-a-half thousand dollars a year, while a family of four earns just over sixty-two thousand dollars a year. This level, this income level encompasses a wide variety of occupations, as you might imagine, so including educators such as teachers, childcare workers, or educational support staff, healthcare professionals such as medical technicians or medical assistants, a lot of service industry employees, like retail employees, restaurant or coffee shop staff, hospitality workers, administrative and office workers, bus drivers, taxi drivers, shuttle drivers, artists and musicians, social service workers, and so on. At the thirty percent AMI level, a one percent, a one-person household earns just over twenty-six thousand dollars a year, while a family of four earns just over thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. So at this income level, we're talking about service industry employees, caretakers and home health aides, custodians and housekeepers, artists and musicians, seniors and retirees, folks who are on fixed incomes, people on social security disability, which starts at twelve thousand dollars a year. So as you can see, the future residents of Lincoln on the Creek are people that each of us interacts with on a daily basis. Another population that could really benefit from Lincoln on the Creek is current Edina renters who are housing burdened. Forty-nine percent of current Edina renters spend more than thirty percent of their gross income on housing costs. That's the definition of being housing burdened. Lastly, seventy-five percent of the units have two bedrooms or more. So the vast majority of our residents will be working families who are looking for housing options closer to where they work. In terms of managing the property and supporting the residents, we are thrilled to be partnering with Property Solutions and Services, or PSS, as our property management partner, and Touchstone Mental Health as our supportive housing service. Mental Health as our supportive housing service provider. PSS brings over 35 years of experience and expertise in affordable housing management, maintenance, and compliance, and they currently manage over 1,200 income-restricted units all over Minnesota. Touchstone was founded over 40 years ago and has extensive experience, experience providing targeted, individualized case management to residents of affordable housing developments. Furthermore, and we think this is important, PSS and Touchstone have a, have a strong established working relationship, as they currently partner on four affordable housing properties in the Twin Cities. Another concern we've heard from both the community and from city officials is whether or not residents, especially those households in the supportive housing units, would be able to easily access the services and amenities that they need. This map shows the proximity of transit options as well as other services and amenities. Everything in this picture is within a 15-minute walk from the site or less than 3/4 of a mile from the site. That includes an existing Metro Transit bus route, which has stops less than 3/10 of a mile from the site, and the future Southwest Light Rail Station, which will be less than 3/4 of a mile from the site. And for things that are not within walking distance, an important reminder from Touchstone is that these residents often use metro mobility to access services they need, such as grocery shopping. So we are confident that there are viable solutions for resident transportation and access. This is our last slide. So, you know, I, I mentioned in the, the earlier timeline that the funding has come together. So now that has allowed us to focus on the city approval process. Much of that is dictated to us by MHFA with their deadlines and requirements. Specifically, construction must be complete and the building must be occupied by the end of 2026. If the building is not occupied by the end of 2026, we lose the MHFA funding. And working backwards, that means sewer and watershed permits are, must be secured and construction must begin in early 2025. To hit that construction timing, the next three months are really critical. We, we plan on initiating a traffic and parking study later this month and submitting a formal land use application in early April. We need land use approval from both the Planning Commission and City Council in May in order to begin the permitting process. That underscores a point I made earlier, on the earlier timeline about needing to parallel path our project with the small area plan, as we would lose the MHFA funding if we were to wait till the small area plan is complete. So with that, we thank you for your time, we thank you for your attention. We welcome your questions and feedback on our revised sketch plan. And as a reminder, we would appreciate your thoughts on two questions. Number one, should we pursue a PUD or a PRD4 for the rezoning? And number two, do you support the land use application for this project? If not, what are your concerns? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixitt. All right. Anybody else have anything they want to add on the presentation?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Jason Lord from Solheim Companies. And I just wanted to give a little more detail and background information on the work that's gone on on the sewer. If now is an okay time or we could wait till questions on that.
You want to give a little more detail on what?
On the sewer and the, the path and engineering work that, that's gone on so far.
Okay, go ahead.
We'll just flip back on one slide here to this map. So we've been working since 2001, and we know that this, this is the issue, because without sewer, no development happens here, whether it's housing or restaurant or any commercial. So our sketch plan application in 2021 actually prompted the engineering team and engineering manager Bittner to do this study, which actually identified the trunk line at capacity in Minnetoka. And engineering manager Bittner, if you could jump in and interrupt any of the engineering terms as I described the sewer, I'd appreciate it. I'm doing my best as a sewer engineer, but I just wanted to say that this is not a unique problem. Solheim is actually developing a project in Brunswick, and that's Brunswick, Maine, and we are upgrading a community lift station there for our new development. So this is a nationwide problem of sewer capacity. It's actually amplified in this, in our metro because of our unique ecology of land and lakes, and it often doesn't match boundaries. And so the situation that we have here is it's at the end of Edina, and the, the rest of Edina is constrained, and this path goes all the way down Nine Mile Creek to 100, and it's a major trunk line, and we're basically at the top of the tributaries. So we're, you know, the I task a lake here of Mississippi, and the whole Mississippi that goes through Edina is, is basically at capacity along this line. So this project affords an opportunity to drive a force main, and it's about 1,200 feet, and if you can see my mouse cursor, paralleling 169 and cross it, the entrance ramp here and crossing to Sintana Road, which has been identified as a main in Minnetoka that currently has capacity. So talking with our engineers, for this one 89 units, that would be about a four-inch plastic pipe, this directional board, and then a lift station added. The second that that would happen, the situation with overcapacity in Edina is improved, because this site is an office building, is no longer contributing to that tributary system, and it would go into Minnetoka that currently has capacity, but per their, their letter that they shared, you know, they're expecting that capacity to be used up in five to seven years. There is an opportunity for this whole area, even our, a civil engineer calculated at max density of, you know, even if you were to say five to 700 units, that would increase the pipe needed to an eight-inch pipe that would go the same 1,200 feet and probably a more powerful pump in the lift, lift station off Sintana Road in, in Minnetoka. So I think the question is, you know, as engineering manager Bittner put it, you know, could this project act as a springboard and start towards the solution today? And there is precedent for our Fred project. We collaborated with the engineering department. We've actually upgraded water loop lines, you know, and, and so that upgrade from four to eight inch could be a collaboration between us that could future-proof this run a little bit. But we do have $2 million in our budget to start helping the project today, but it's up to the council, both councils of Edina and Minnetoka, for long-term agreements, you know, whether that's TIF or paying sewer fees or how that would work 10, 20 years in the future. That's, that's beyond our knowledge, but what we can solve is getting a pipe in to help the sewer project today. I don't know if there are any more questions or details on that specific item.
Thank you. All right, let's go to member Pierce.
Got a few questions.
Just one clarification. So your two questions, your first one, I think it would be good for us if you would just give the definition of those two so that we're all operating from the same definition.
So I just, I just put up a slide here.
Okay. And so your question there is, you had two questions, is one, repeat your two questions.
Yeah, the first one is, if you have any guidance on whether we should pursue a PUD or a PRD4 with variances for the rezoning.
Okay.
And the second question is, do you?
Yeah, okay. All right, so I guess maybe leave that, maybe leave that up, I suppose. So the, couple of things, I do want to commend you, Mr. Dixitt, for coming forward and I would say working really diligently since the last time we saw you. I'd say you're, you're, whether, whether you want to or not, you are kind of becoming the face of this project. And I appreciate that, like, we see the same person. And so it's kind of, it's easy, it's easier to have a conversation, it's easier to kind of build trust in that way. So I definitely appreciate that. Just, I think you answered, I have three questions and then I'll, I'll make some comments. I think you answered the one question on what parallel means on your timeline. And so I guess the question would be, are you comfortable with the risk if you run in parallel and within the small area plan, a different decision is made that would eliminate this project from being a viable option? Are you comfortable with the, is Solheim comfortable with the risk?
Well, the, the parallel path is really about getting to a decision on land use, on the land use application this spring. So, so we would be looking for that approval or denial much sooner.
With the time constraint?
Yeah.
I think you had, was it May of?
Of this year.
Yeah, of this year, okay. And so as long as we're meeting that timeline from Solheim's perspective, you're comfortable with that from a risk perspective?
Well, only in the sense that, and this speaks to the second question I asked. As Mayor Hovland, as you mentioned in your opening remarks to the chambers about the purpose of the sketch plan review, that's exactly what we want to get out of this, is a, is a temperature check. Is it worth the risk?
Got it.
Time, energy, money?
Okay.
To move forward.
Okay. Second question, you mentioned this maintenance escrow. Can you kind of describe what that is in a little bit more detail and how that might operate?
So this is a, a new, a new idea that recently surfaced, so we have not figured out all the mechanics. But the broad idea is that this project will generate additional tax revenue that, and it's not part of a TIF district. So can a portion or all of that be put into an escrow fund so that, in essence, this development is pre-funding future improvements in the sewer district?
Okay, okay.
And to add, to add a little bit to that, it's...
All right, let's, let's hold it down, everybody.
Yeah, just keep your thoughts to yourself, please.
So just to add a little bit on the, the parallel process and the, the opportunity, Councilmember Pierce, we, with the small area plan, you know, the permitting process, you know, will take almost a year, and, and that was in, in Amol's timeline and schedule. It's, it's so will construction. So we're really looking at, at building. If we do, as part of this development, build a sewer extension to Sintana Ave just across the way on 169, we could take into feedback some of the small area plan, and that could be a discussion in the coming years of, do we upgrade from a four-inch to an eight-inch pipe, or do it a 10-inch pipe, right? And can we help collaborate on that? But then that, as we've all discussed, it's the long-term piece that's sort of out of our hands with what's the agreement between the two cities for 10, 20, 30 years from now. But we can collaborate as the plans develop through permitting and the small area plan runs in parallel.
Okay.
One other thing I would say is, similar to how manager Bittner mentioned that the short-term solution for the sewer could be the springboard to the long-term solution, we, we could see this project working with and being a springboard as part of the small area plan. We're not fighting the small area plan. We know it's happening, we understand why it's happening. How can this project potentially be a part of that?
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then the last question, you had a slide where you talked about AMI, and you, you hit everything on there, with the exception of you had, oh, no, not this one.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
That one?
That one, yeah. So you covered the top two. What's 18 supportive housing?
Sorry, I didn't clarify that. Of the 23 units that are for households at 30% AMI, 18 of those 23 are supportive housing units. And that's, those are the units that Touchstone Mental Health will be providing services for.
Okay. And then I, I thought of another question that, it may be unfair to ask this, but I think I can because you were here for the entire meeting. And so we had an earlier community comment about another facility and challenges with potential challenges managing that particular facility. And so how would Solheim ensure that those, that that facility is managed in, in a, a way that we would expect?
I'm going to actually ask Asher Gavzy from PSS to address that.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, Councilman Mayor. My name's Asher Gavzy, I'm president of Property Solutions and Services. So we manage just over 1,600 units inside the 494, 694 loop, all being affordable. Of those 1,600 units, about 500 are kind of housing support or that, you know, 18 units in there. So really how we look at kind of crime is it starts at the initial application. We judge everyone when we're reviewing on an individual assessment. So everyone has their own history, and we look at that and what is deemed kind of safe for the community. And so how that looks like is if someone has a felony embezzlement, should that really affect them from living on the property, right? Is the property more or less safe from them living there? On the other hand, if someone has five or six misdemeanors of drug possession over a 12-month period, that probably looks unsafe. And so that's how it starts. And then as people reside in, we address behavior as it's needed. You know, this property is going to have a full-time site manager that's there 40 hours a week, will be able to really understand what is going on, and it gets as kind of intimate as boyfriend or girlfriend is living in the unit, not on the lease. That's where it starts. That's where we have to know that, that's where we address it. You know, my assumption would be the crime, the incident that happened at this property, maybe one, if any, were actually leaseholders. And so it's identifying those people, it'd be, you know, trespassing those individuals well before an incident broke out. And that's just, you know, if you know your property, you know your residents, you'll know what's going to come before it comes, and then we address it.
Okay. Thank you for that very much. And so just comments, I, I do think that this is a much better project than what we saw earlier. And, you know, we, we may have some revisionist history, but, but I, I do recall the two questions I asked, and I think they were probably the first two I asked, does it have to be so tall? Can you do townhomes? And I remember the answer being no to that. And there were a couple of reasons for that. A couple came from the developer, and I think we had one no that was related to the comprehensive plan for that area. And so for you to, to take that feedback along with the rest of the feedback from my colleagues and come back with a, a project that, I, I think really this is a, is a potential to be a really good project. The unfortunate thing is, in the time between that and today, and I'll just speak for myself, I had tea with two neighbors from the townhome sitting on their deck, looking at the proposed direction of this particular project, and had a conversation with them. And I would say that they had no issue with affordable housing. The principal things that, that they talked about was the, the mass. And so today, from their deck, all they see is trees, and if the original building had gone up seven stories, it would have impacted their view. Like, that was one of the things they talked about. And then I walked the property with another group of neighbors, just because for me, that project started me asking questions to myself about, well, what could we really do here? I mentioned that, I think in Edina, we do need more ownership options, and talked specifically about townhomes. So more housing affordability, more ownership options, idea of townhomes. And I would recall, I think one of my colleagues even said, man, if this was townhomes, it might be a slam dunk. And so seeing that you have, you've taken that into account, however, they're rentals, but you've talked about, well, maybe they convert, they could convert. And so I do think that that was good. But I walked that property with, all the way down to Nine Mile Creek, and had conversations about imagining what and had conversations about imagining what could this property be. And along with my colleagues, that's kind of where this idea, once we all kind of had our own interactions, came up with, well, maybe we should do a small area plan to really think about what this could be and involve the neighbors in that process. And so, I personally feel like I committed to doing a small area plan. So, again, I think it's awesome that you're saying you don't want, you're not asking us not to do a small area plan. And I think that is awesome. However, I do think that there's a time constraint there. I don't know how quickly we can get a small area plan done. And I'd also say, the reason you do the small area plan is because you're not sure what you want to have there. And so, I could also see that we go through the small area plan and because of other constraints, we decide that we can't do an apartment complex there. Like, those are all permutations of having that process in place. But, I do feel like we definitely need to move forward with a small area plan. For the facility, I like the fact, like I said, I think it's a great project. I like the fact that the parking is below grade. I love the fact that oftentimes, we talk about transitioning and we use various methods to do that. Setbacks is one. You might step the building differently. And in this case, I think the first neighbors that I sat down with who talked about what would be in their view, this thought that actually what would be across from them now would be, well, they wouldn't even see the townhomes, right? But, when winter comes and they could see through the trees, they would just see townhomes there. And so, I think that I applaud that idea of using the townhomes as the transition. I do believe that in Edina, and I've talked about this a lot, we do need greater housing affordability. Today, the majority of our affordable housing just happens to be in the southeast quadrant. And I had a conversation with a neighbor who I believe lived in the Cornelia neighborhood. And she said to me, you know, she's for affordable housing, workforce housing. She gave some examples of friends or neighbors of people that she thought could utilize it. But then, she said, James, affordable housing needs to be equitable. And as we dug into what she meant by that, she meant it shouldn't all be concentrated in one area, right? We should find a way, if someone wants to own a home, albeit a townhome or what have you, they should have that option. But, the majority of the affordable housing that we have today would be rental apartments exactly like yours. And so, we need to have affordable housing. And I think we need it in West Edina. And so, the conversation is, then how are we going to make that happen? And so, I don't know if that is the right location for that or not. Just down the road in Edina West, there actually are affordable condos there. And so, we do have a little bit of that on the west side. But, to the point that you made earlier, there's not a lot in West Edina. And I think it's important for anybody to hear me say that because I'm for affordable housing affordability across the lifecycle. And you actually mentioned that in your comments. So, I, my feedback to you is, I think, I think you actually do have a great project here. For me personally, I think the timing is off. And so, if you ask me, well, then how do you get over that hurdle, Councilmember Pierce? I'm actually not sure. But, I think it would probably go back to, what do we get from a community standpoint if we were to move forward? And have that particular, that particular complex there, our apartment with the townhomes there. And then, whatever comes out of our small area plan, the idea of that being a jumping off point for some kind of community development, that's probably the right idea to be thinking. But, I would really have to ask myself, what would make me go back to a resident? And say, yeah, you know, I thought we should do this, however I'm changing, and here's what the benefit is? I don't know that, I know for sure today I'm not there. But, in this process of completing the small area plan, I might get there, but I'm not there today. And then, your two questions, oh, no, before I answer the two questions, the sewer capacity, like, that gives me a lot of pause. I was sitting here thinking, like, Member Agnew and I, we're in technology, right? And we use this process when we do projects. We either use Agile or if we're doing app development, we might say, well, let's do a minimally viable product. And to us, that's great because it lets you prove the ROI as you go. And then, you add and you manage your costs. I think that's a horrible process to go through when you're talking about developing and to the tune of millions of, millions of dollars. So, that would give me pause for us to use that kind of a process here. I would much rather go through the small area plan, understand what we want and be planful about how we get there and plan for how we would do, we would deal with the sewer capacity. And then, after this comment, I'll answer your two questions. I believe, I'm just guessing, that we have people, residents here today, who want to make sure we do the small area plan. But, a lot of the folks that I've talked to also aren't sure that we should have affordable housing in that area. And so, some have mentioned that to me as well. And I think that's totally fair. But, I want people to hear me say, if we go through the small area plan, the small area plan may still dictate that we want to use that site for some type of affordable, housing affordability. And so, it may not be this project, but we shouldn't be thinking we're going to use the small area plan to keep an affordable housing, to keep the city from doing affordable housing or housing affordability in a particular area. That is not the way the process works. And so, that's why I kind of make my comments that way. The outcome that we want here is something that I think we definitely need. We have to figure out a way to do it. And so, to your questions, I don't think I would even answer the first one. I personally don't think you should move forward. I understand that you would lose the grants. But, and then I'll close with this. But, something else that I've continued to say, one of the challenges with figuring out housing affordability in Edina is the fact that we don't have the funding to sustain multiple projects to get this done. And what that dictates is that we end up getting the affordable housing that the developer proposes to us. And so, that is what's happening in this case. And that's not a bad thing. But, that is just the way I feel like this is structured because we have very limited dollars as a city to really go after the type of affordable housing that we want. And so, I don't think you should move forward. My hope is that we would go through the small area plan. Coming out of that, we could dictate what type of housing affordability we want in that area. And then, we could go forward as a city to figure out how to get there. And once you have that, then perhaps Solheim can come forward and say, you know what, yeah, we can, we can do that. We want to be a part of that solution. To me, that's the sound way to do it. Because then, a part of that plan would be addressing the sewer issue. And so, you'd have a full plan of what's going to happen that you could then determine the best way to move forward. So, those are... Yeah, those are all of my comments.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. I'm going to turn now to Member Rusher.
Thank you. And if we could get the Edina zoning map up on the screen, that would be really helpful. Okay, thank you. If you look at this map and you do see Planned Residential, which is blue, and then Residential is all white. And if we could zoom in to the Parkwood Knowles area, the project site. And I want to recognize Planning Commissioner Day for talking about this. And he was saying, you know, once you rezone to purely residential, you're never going to really get that back. And as you look at Edina, we don't really have that much diversity in terms of land use. The Seltdale area, yeah, we have it. Although, when you look at the Seltdale area, you'll see these purple regions. Those are the PUDs. But, some of them are purely residential. So, it doesn't accurately reflect how much of the land is actually purely residential. You go to the Wooddale Valley View area, three of, you've got large sectors that are purely residential. So, that's really eroded that business node. As I hear you talk about sewer capacity and hey, maybe we could go from four-inch to an eight-inch or maybe a 10-inch pipe, I think what's going to happen? Because if we, you know, look at that yellow area of the site, that's going to essentially be all blue. You add more sewer capacity, that whole industrial area could go blue. And I think we really need to ask ourselves why we're not protecting a diverse kind of land use. And today, there are office, you know, uses in the existing building. I learned four of the offices are run by people who live in Parkwood Knowles. So, they're living in the area. One's just like five blocks away. One of the business owners hires people who don't even have high school diplomas, pays them enough so that they could not actually live in these units. So, you know, when we talk about what's happening in Edina and we talk about moving toward a system where there's more equity, I think we need to take in a more nuanced view. And I feel like the project that's before us came at us really fast. We had to make a decision at the HRA really fast to meet a deadline for a grant. Now, we're hearing we need to make a decision by May. And I, you know, it might seem ridiculous to say you have to have mixed use on a site that is smaller than three acres. But, the reality is, there's not a lot of variation in that area right now. And if you take that and you make it go blue, you've reduced that. And so, I think, again, back to my initial point, a project comes in, it needs to be screened, it needs to be evaluated. And we need to talk about how important it is to maintain that mixed use. To me, it is really important. And, you know, maybe it can't be a commercial addition, but, you know, maybe there could be an office or something. But, to just flip, and we keep doing this. And I don't understand why we keep rezoning to purely residential projects and really reducing the variety of land use. We also need to update our zoning map. The 5100 Eden Avenue, that's purple now too. It's not an office anymore because that was rezoned. So, this is really very much on my mind and it is a big deal. And it does scare me that, you know, you want to work in partnership with the small area plan, but you want to also, you're excited about making the pipe bigger. And I just, you know, what is it going to be? All residential in that industrial area? Don't we want to keep some of that? So, that's my, those are my largest concerns, but I do have other concerns. We are getting a plan that comes from you. There are ownership models for affordable housing. This does not include that until 15 years, maybe the townhomes will flip. I would like to see the capacity in all of the apartment structure. My understanding is that the standards for condos have to be higher than apartment buildings. I don't know, but it should be every single unit that goes in could be transformed to a ownership model so that people could actually build equity. We've put in a lot of apartments and we need to diversify the affordable housing that we are providing. I think, you know, you take your money and you spend it on rent, you're never going to get that back. The other thing is, I did look at the menus for the restaurants nearby. They're not necessarily going to be places that people are going to be able to afford to go and eat. So, there's that, that's just kind of an aside. But, I feel like this is a frustrating situation because I think there is a lot of support for affordable housing. But, I feel like what's coming at us has really come at us in a way that is not a discussion, but it's, here we go. This is what you're getting. And we want you to flip industrial land to purely residential. And that's, that kind of is unsettling. And it makes me wonder, you know, if that can happen here, you know, why would you even bother setting up an office in Edina? You know, you can't count on the zoning. So, anyhow, I just, it's fascinating. But, it raises a lot of concerns. I think we need to look at our process more. And I really think we need to understand why we are pushing more purely residential on land that is used for other purposes because we're just not going to have any nodes. So, I don't really want to respond to should it be PUD or PRD because it's a purely residential project. I do think requesting that you have a 10-foot setback variance on all sides is asking for a lot. It's great you're going to put in new trees, but you're taking out mature trees. And we did just have a lot of discussion at our last meeting about, you know, the value of mature trees. And this is right by a highway. So, you know, trees can function as air filters and all of that. And if you're putting in small starter trees and taking out mature trees, you know, that's something that we need to think about as well. So, you know, I wish this was owner, there were owner options that would kick in before 15 years. I think that's a lot. And asking us to make a decision by May is a really big ask. Thank you.
Member Agnew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, first, I just want to commend you on the work that you've done. First, in revising this plan. It's clear how much of the feedback you've taken through the multiple iterations. And the fact that you were able to find a way to include the townhouses is, again, really commendable. I think the other part is, this amount of funding that you've received for this project is like virtually unheard of, right? Like, the amount of time and focus and intention that you have put towards prioritizing affordable housing within Edina is amazing. And so, thank you for that. I think that where we're at right now is just a really tough spot. And this, this isn't ideal, it's not ideal for anyone. There is no way to meet all of the needs of people in our community with this site and with the project that's moving forward. Excuse me, with the project that's in front of us today. I think that the hardest part about this is, I can't imagine a project for this small area plan or any development within the small area plan that doesn't include some type of housing, right? Which means to me that we need to figure out the sewer issue, whether it's now or whether it's later. I too have walked the site with residents. I do think that this is a overall, and I'm thinking about the entire area plan now at this point. It's a beautiful area. And I would love to see housing involved in part of that. And I also know that there are a lot of people who are neighbors to this community who have really big visions for what this site could entail. And, you know, on one side of it, I know that we have decided as a council to move forward with the small area plan because there was a proposal on the table for a... move forward with the small area plan because there was a proposal on the table for affordable housing that, that upset some people, right? I know that that was a part of the equation. And so now, when we're faced with the decision of, okay, well, now we have this small area plan in, in front of us, I want to give the due process to that small area plan because I know that there are also residents who want to see the best done with this, this entire site as possible, right? I know how important that is, and I know how invested people are in this site, and I know that the vast majority of them don't just want to stop affordable housing. But I do want to give the nod to, to the fact that that has been a part of the dialogue. There's no way, again, to meet the needs of everyone, because on the other side of this coin are those that need affordable housing within our community. Uh, not all of those people live here today, right? We're, we're trying to find ways to add housing to the overall stock to Edina. But there are also a lot of situations, and you mentioned them, right? People are that are, are housing burden today within Edina. There are people who are a part of our community today who have a hard time finding housing, affordable housing within, within Edina. And there are countless stories of people who, close to all of us, you know, myself included, that could benefit from this being in our community. And so it's, it's just really tough. And I, I just, I say all that to acknowledge that everyone here has emotions and has investment in both sides of, of this equation of what could this site be? I, I will give some feedback to the overall site plan, because I, I do just want to give a nod to that. I, I do think that Member Russer's comments about vertical mixed use and, and needing to maintain this overall neighborhood node is the one facet to this site plan that we're reviewing today that isn't there. Um, and I know it's a small site overall, and so we're trying to put in a lot of things. I know you're committed to the 89 units due to the funding sources for the financing, and I get the constraints that we as a city place on you due to our parking minimums and other constraints like that. So I know that, but I also know how important it is to maintain those neighborhood node elements of this, this community, and I do think that this is a good site for that. And so, again, all of this to say is there are so many different factors at play here. Um, the, the sewer, I think, also being a primary one, right? Like, we've all paid a lot of attention to that tonight because it is something that needs to be solved, and I'm not comfortable kicking the can five to seven years down the road and just saying we'll tackle it then. But that's like a call to action of us as this city council. If we want to see housing, any amount within this small area plan, it's something that we need to solve. And I don't think that we can just kick it to the small area plan to say, oh, you got to do it within the constraints of the sewer capacity. Because I also know that we have really substantial goals as a community that are centered around creating more affordable housing. And part of that also has to do with our climate action plan, right? We need to add housing, we need to do all of that in order to meet those goals that we've already set forward as a city. So it's on us to, to try and find a way to rectify that. And yet, to that, to your question, right? What, what we're all here for is, and I, I hope this makes sense, right? I would love to see this project move forward. I love the investment that you've put into the, the townhouses, I think that that's so key. But I also don't think that you should continue to spend resources on pursuing it. And that's because I'm, I'm hearing the, the voices of others, I'm hearing what some of these big concerns are, I'm hearing how impactful the sewer capacity is going to be in the short term, and I know the aggressive time constraints that you have to make a decision. And so in the, in the idea of partnership, because that, that is what I believe, you've taken our feedback and you've iterated on this, and you've invested a lot of time into making this a really great project. But in the vein, in that idea of, of partnership, I just don't know that it's the best use of resources to consider pursuing this in this, in this fashion, um, which is hard to say, right? Um, so I, I hope that that makes sense, and again, I, I do appreciate all that you've put into this project. And again, the amount of funding that you've received is, is amazing, and I, I would love to see something move forward here. I just don't know that this is what it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Agnew. I'm going to turn now to Member Jackson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, it's hard to follow all of that. So I'm going to be brief. Um, the whole point of having zoning regulations is for health and safety. And so not knowing what the sewer answer is going to be, if we say yes, moving forward on this, we are committing to building a new sewer line to this part of Edina. It could be anywhere from 20 to $40 million environmental impact statement, huge disruption. We may come to the fact that we need that, but I would need to know what's expected from both the city of, of Minnetonka and the city of Edina in terms of costs and engineering for this to, because you can't build a building without sewer capacity, and seven years is not sewer capacity. So just simply for the health and safety purposes, I do want to acknowledge, like Member Agnew said, my goodness, you guys have listened to us so carefully, you've responded to all our concerns, you've worked hard, this is a beautiful project, but our number one real, our number one purpose of having zoning laws is to have a safe building. So, um, I really, I, I need to see what we would be committing to, and we would be committing to a massive increase in our sewer capacity, which we may very well need, um, and, and to move forward, but I just don't know how we do that in the timeline. So, um, I do want to thank you very much for all your responsiveness and, and hard work on this, but I, I, I don't think we can do it in the time. Um, I can't, we, we can't do that by May unless you can come back and say this is what it's going to look like, and this is how we can monetize the air, entire area to pay for the new sewer line. That's a big lift for three months, so, um, it's just, it's just too much, too fast, and which makes me very sad, because it's a beautiful project, so, thank you.
Thanks, Member Jackson. On the positive side, um, I really liked the reduction to 89 units. Um, it was a dramatic improvement, no longer two phases, uh, with almost 150, 140, 150 units. I think you paid good attention to, uh, what folks were telling you there. The notion of loading the height toward Highway 169 was a good idea, I think that's a real positive. Um, you know, I stand up there on the corner and look both directions, there's Cloud Nine across the street, across the highway, and then there's Opus, uh, up to the, to the south, down to the south with United Healthcare, there's all types of height in that area, and when you loaded it towards the highway, it made a big difference, and the height isn't that high. And I, and I don't think the way you redesigned it, it would have any adverse impact on, on the neighbors. I just think the profile is so low now that they're not going to see much, even in, even in the wintertime. Um, the housing mix, I think Member Agnew mentioned that, uh, the combination of townhomes and multifamily, that's, that's all a positive as well. The suggestion that a small area plan process run concurrently with your application, uh, doesn't work for me. Um, you know, you, you had that timeline up, and you were talking about when you had applied for the grant, and then when the decision was made to, uh, do the small area plan, then you find out, you found out you got a grant for about $27 million, which is now going to cover about 60% of your costs. And when you and I met, you told me you were really surprised you got the grant. And so it caused me to think, as we're sitting here tonight, and in the period between tonight and the time we had that meeting, and thinking, oh, wait a minute, now, if you think we need to act by May, I, I get it, the, you know, the fact that you're, you, all of a sudden, you've got a, you've got $27 million in your cart for checkout, you know? But you were prepared to do this without any supplemental funding, and you were quite surprised that you got the money that you got. So that tells me that you saw some value in this project, uh, independent of whether you got a grant or not. And, and so for you to say that we should run this concurrently, I, I, I don't understand that. I mean, because for me, a promise made is a promise kept. We, before we knew you had a grant, even if we had known you had a grant, we told the, the neighborhood that we would run a small area plan to see what the, what, what this 44 acres could look like from a planned basis, and particularly that, probably that nine acre area that, uh, that Ross Bittner is talking about, that's probably the, the key to the whole thing, uh, in terms of what it could be. And as Member Jackson says, uh, without determining sewer capacity, we need to solve that, resolve that sewer capacity issue, and without doing a small area plan, we can't really resolve in any way what we might potentially need there, or whether it's even worthwhile proceeding. So to me, that's a practical predicate to, uh, that, that kind of attaches itself to the promise made, that we would, that, that we would do the small area plan first. So when you think about the small area plan commitment, when you think about the sewer capacity issue, uh, and then there's the, the TIF issue, you know, you and I, you, you, thank you for coming up with some ideas about how you, how you characterize return on investment, uh, beyond the social. I mean, I, I understand this, the social, uh, return, that we put, and we've done this in the past several times, committed to buildings and made substantial investments where we're putting workforce in our town, uh, and we're saying that's good enough for us. But we started to evolve towards this idea of what's our return on our investment, uh, when we make those kinds of commitments. And we talked about this contingent sort of two and a half million dollar grant conditioned on the site plan, well, it was actually conditioned on more than that. I mean, it was, we hadn't even had a conversation, uh, about what's the ROI, you know? And so, in fact, in one of the meetings we had, I think it was one of the other sketch plans, I said, well, like at 4040 West 70th, we own the land. So 99 years from now, all of us that, that are shareholders in Edina, are owners of Edina, we, we got a, we got a return on investment, we got a piece of land that's a, that's appreciating in value. I haven't heard you suggest anything like that here, uh, or that we would be, if we're, if we're a, what do you characterize us, as a 7% investor? Yeah. Where's our 7% return over, independent from the, from the, uh, social benefit? I think that's, that was, to me, an important thing to be thinking about, too. So whether the IO, ROI was adequate, whether there's sewer capacity, we got risk management issues there, uh, the small area plan commitment, um, and then I, I actually had, as, uh, Oscar, I'm sorry I didn't get your last name, you were talking about, um, properties that you manage, 1,600 units, a lot of them are, are, um, supportive, and, uh, there, there were four projects you mentioned, uh, Mr. Dixit, that ESF, I think it was, and Touchstone worked together on. So, you know, one of the things that I think would be important for us to know, too, as a community, was, well, what kind of data do we have from those, those projects where you work together with their supportive housing, on whether the people that are internal into the project are able to manage everybody's needs that need to be met? And if not, is the county helping in some form or fashion? And then what about the city? I mean, we've got supportive people, too, but are you going to need some of our services, too? And that's, that's something we haven't even, even looked at. You know, we, we want to help people out, too, but, um, we've only got so much capacity. And so that, that was one thing I'd, I'd like to know more about. Uh, it may be irrelevant, uh, because, um, for me, uh, like the others that you've heard from tonight, uh, I think the next step for us is continue to work on the small area plan, and, and you'll have to make your own decision, uh, with respect to whether you want PRD or PUD, uh, that may be a non-issue now, although I would tell you that I think PUD gives you more flexibility, us more flexibility in what we fashion, especially with the ROA out there as an issue. I'd be concerned about that. So, um, I think, I, what I hear my colleagues saying is we're headed in the direction of a small area plan honoring that commitment. If you decide you want to come back, and I think Member Agnew is right on the mark, I mean, I can't imagine that small area plan will come back without some housing component. There's a lot of good things to say about what you're proposing, you know? And if you've got the patience to wait to see what happens, uh, if you can put people off on that grant, or regardless, you want to come back and see whether this works, we're willing to entertain that, that notion, you know? I know some people are worried about, uh, whether their property values might go down. I don't think, I don't think there's any data to support a, a conclusion like that. In fact, I've asked for some data from Twin Cities Housing Alliance, which is mostly developers, working on housing affordability, these issues that Member Pierce has raised for us. Um, you know, the issue of how, how our kids can afford to live here, the same thing that Twin Cities Housing Alliance is working on. I've asked them, they, they said there's quite a bit of data around the fact that, no, affordable housing doesn't lower people's property values in nearby neighborhoods, and this, this project is on a highway, it's, uh, probably 2,000 feet from the closest single-family home. It's not going to lower anybody's property values, if, if it were a viable, otherwise a viable project, and I'm not prejudging it one way or the other. Uh, but I am, I am telling you that I'm in favor of finishing the small area plan and see where it leads us, because then that, that leads us to a conversation about sewer capacity and whether we can even take it on as a community. As, uh, as Ross Bittner said, can we make a business case for it? Well, we can't even decide whether there's a, you know, to evaluate a business case until we, we know what we're looking at, so. I'm, I'm in the same place everybody else is, and that was probably a little bit more windy than you needed, but, uh, Member Jackson was much, much more concise. So that's where we are, and you'll have to go and decide what you want to do.
I do, well, thank you all for your, uh, your comments and, and your honesty. That's what we ask for, so thank you for that. One thing, Mayor Hovland, I do want to clarify, but then I want to make sure you have the last word. I'm not looking to have the last word here. When I said I was surprised at the award, I was surprised we got the 9% tax credit award.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And, and if we hadn't gotten the award, we wouldn't have been able to go forward. Um, it's just
Okay.
Too much of a funding gap.
All right. Thanks for, thanks for that clarification as well, it clears up a misunderstanding I had. Thank you for that. And just to make it clear, I don't have any question about your genuineness or your integrity. I found you to be very great to deal with and, and have a high, hold you in high regard. I wouldn't have made those
Same here, Mayor.
I wouldn't have made those comments about your other project, and you, uh, let's say we're earnest, so.
Appreciate that.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, we've got a little more work to do. We can, if, if people want to leave, we could, uh, we can take, we can stand up and stretch a little bit if you want to take off, and we'll finish our work here.
if you want to take off, and we'll finish our work here. Chief, Chief, I met the government affairs guy for Flock Safety. You saw that, I guess I included you on that.
They were customers.
Yeah, he looked, he looked us up. I said, I'm pretty sure that the license plate readers we have are Flock. All right, everybody, we're back to work. We've only got a short bit of work left to do. And I think we're actually, we'll jump beyond commission correspondence. I don't think there's anything that we haven't all seen in our packets. And I don't think Clerk Allison, anything has come in that we need to be mindful of. So let's go to manager's comments, and then we'll go to mayor and, we'll go to council comments, and then mayor comments.
I have no comments for tonight.
All right, let's flip it, I think, and go to Member Agnew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one tonight, and that's more of a, a general ask. So we just recently changed our community comment process where we now respond with written comments on our website. And I don't know if this was communicated, I just missed it. But then that meant that we didn't provide those updates here in the meeting. And I don't know if maybe I want to pose this as a question to other council members, but my ideal would be that we have it online and also provide that response kind of item by item in the meeting. But I would love to hear from others. I don't know if this was also an intention to kind of shorten up how much the time we're spending on that. But just in terms of ensuring that everyone has access to the answers and that it's kind of clear we're providing that continuity, I do think it would be helpful, knowing that it will take more time to go through it.
Yeah, good, good thought, eh?
Were, were, Councilmember Agnew, members of council, were you thinking I was going to read the verbatims? Or, I mean, I gave kind of a quick review, but you wanted something a little longer than that? Okay.
Something a little bit more comprehensive, too, I think.
I think just a little bit more comprehensive, not verbatim, but thinking even of like the, the triordinance. And I know that kind of when there was a little bit of discussion, we got a little bit more of that. But even stating, you know, we're going to be scheduling a work session to have that topic on the agenda. It's currently scheduled for X date, or it's not yet scheduled. Kind of some more of those details so that members of the community don't have, they can just tune in for the meeting as well and kind of get a high-level update on that action, rather than also then having to tune in. Which especially then, I think also, did I catch this? That we're going to only have it online for maybe 60 days or for a time period after the fact? Yeah, I think that'll also help, because sometimes people tune into meetings years in advance. I'm going back and watching some old videos myself. And so I think just continuing to have as much of that, that documented resource for members of the community, the better. And that was it for me.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. Member Pierce.
Just to kind of follow up on that a little bit. It was a little, I guess I'd say anticlimactic. So, so I was expecting you to answer the questions and then reference, go to the website if you want to read it, or maybe there's more detail there or something like that. And so I did, it kind of left me wanting more, or just curious about that. And so I, I don't know if it is to Member Agnew's point, if it's maybe your summary needs to be more detailed or something like that.
Our first time, we'll find a balance.
And they refer people to the website. I think it is smart to have it cataloged in that way. And then having the location, people can go to see it. So that's that. And then the, the other thing, I do have a number of law enforcement people in my friends and my network, and I would just, right, give them, give them a hug, right? I pray for, pray for the slain officers and first responder in Burnsville. But then also just to protect those that are continuing to serve their various communities as well. So that's it.
Thank you. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to echo those thoughts. That's beautifully put, Member Pierce. And I'm just very sad, and I hope that the memory of these first responders is a blessing to their community and to their family. I wanted to say something on behalf of the Edina Crime Prevention Fund. We will be reaching out, I'm on the board of, of the Crime Prevention Fund, and we will be reaching out to the city of Burnsville on behalf of both the crime fund, the city, and the community to let them know how much we are in, in community with them and mourning with them. And then we're also going to reach out here in the community to acknowledge just the wonderful work that our first responders do. They rush in into dangerous situations where most people run out, and we're very grateful for their dedication and their courage. So thank you.
Thank you. Member Richard.
I, I would also like to echo that and just voice my appreciation for all of the hard work from our first responders. And also Jennifer Bennerott for being there and helping out, because communication is so key. So, and for Manager Neil for keeping us posted on what was happening. It just, you know, these are really hard, hard times. And are, it is so important that we have such dedicated staff, and I really do appreciate everything. Chief Milburn being there, and Chief Slama just being present, so thank you.
All great comments. I just, you know, it just seems like the grief is so widespread and so deep through so many communities and so many people in the metro area. And Chief, thanks for being down there yourself, and I think, and to your folks you had down there. And I thought of Chief Slama, who had Mr. Finseth as part of his team down there. I think he probably worked with him for several years when he was in Savage. They were together down there. So I'm sure it's really difficult for our, our chief, and of course, those families. So thanks for all your thoughts on that. One thing I've forgotten to do here in the past few meetings is, we had a fellow pass away in our community named Kelly Doran, who was a developer in our community and had a, had quite a big personality. And I went to his funeral. You know, he ran for the Senate one time years ago. I think he lived out in Eden Prairie at the time. He did live in Edina often on, I believe, over the years. And some of the things that his, his kids who were eulogists for him in terms of lessons about life, and just what he thought about things, I thought were worth passing on, and that big smiling face of his, we're going to miss him so much. But they said, well, he was firm and fair, but he always trusted other people, to be fair, too. And that he had incredibly strong opinions, and I knew that. I was a recipient of some of those opinions over time. But he also said, and he had a little bit of Wellstone in him, when he said, you know, we all do better, and we all do better. That's a, that's a Wellstonism. But then he told his kids, don't ever shy away from fairness. Never get, you never get anything done alone. And we're all human, we all make mistakes. People generally try to do their best, and honor your word. So those are some really good characteristics and traits of Kelly Doran, I thought. And so we wish his family the best, and we'll miss him as well. Thank you, Kelly, for being part of Edina over the years. Thanks, Jennifer, for that. Over the weekend, I was in California for that U.S. Conference of Mayors Leadership Meeting. Covered a variety of different topics. And I told Scott today that one of the, we had a session on Saturday morning, this is Kate and James's alley. We had a session on cities and how they can implement AI. We had a Harvard Business Professor there and a woman from Johns Hopkins Center for, Bloomberg Center for Excellence at Johns Hopkins. I actually talked to her later on, and I said, do you ever come out to cities? Because the session was a couple hours long, and it was really valuable. And she said, yeah, I come out to cities all the time. And I said, so I'm going to try to recruit her to come out here to meet with us, and maybe she could tie it into a regional council of mayors meeting to take us through this whole AI thing from their perspective, and tell us what we ought to be thinking about from a city standpoint. They started out by talking about, on a national geopolitical level, the immigration plan that failed, they, excuse me, John Giles, who's the mayor of Mesa, had worked on it, said it was an excellent bill that Langford had put together that had bipartisan support. But some of those senators and congressmen just couldn't say yes. And then we talked about Ukraine. We talked about immigration issues dealing with mental health that were affecting different communities like Lincoln, Nebraska, and New Orleans. I thought, one of the interesting things about New Orleans was their population is down now to 383,000. It used to be 450 before Katrina. They've only got 14% owner-occupied housing, 14%. And 54%, I thought I wrote this down properly, 54% of young people in New Orleans have lost someone that they know or in their family to gun violence. So anyway, there was, there was, you know, all these report outs from, and then San Diego as well, dealing with the unhoused, and, and we had a good session on, on the mental health overall. I thought, you know, this was again about Burnsville, but Burnsville, and maybe you knew this, Chief, and maybe you did too, Scott, they, they have two dogs that they use for mental health purposes. One's internal, that circulates through the PD and the Chaplain, Chaplaincy Corps, and then for the, for the fire department, they bring them around. And, and then they've got one that they use externally with people. And Doc and somebody, and I thought, well, that was a pretty clever idea. And then they've got also something that, they've got a mobile city hall that they use to go out to neighborhoods, and it's called EVA is the acronym for it. And of course, now here, I'm looking at my notes, and I can't find out what EVA means, but it was, it was astounding was part of it. Anyway, it's this little van that goes out in the neighborhoods wherever they've got issues or concerns, and they meet with them periodically. And it caused me to think about whether or not we should be doing something like that. And then some cities have been creating wellness centers at their, at some of their facilities, and it caused me to think about whether we should be creating a wellness center for, at the Metro Police and Fire Facility for all the folks that are involved in public safety. I don't know if you've, you're raising your hand. Is that something that's being done or thought about?
We'll go back to the, the dog. We, we have funding in place, and we have a dog on the way for later on this year. And we're just trying to line up our handler, and we're real close to that. So we are going to have a therapy dog in the hallway that we also might bridge into our future alternative response team that can be out there responding to those places in need or those people in need as well. So we're really excited about that. It's on the way.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fantastic to hear. The other thing was that I hadn't thought about from a mental health standpoint, and that was mental health and urban design. And it caused me to think about, when we get to this next stage of visioning, they had someone there from the Urban Design Center for, it's called MICD. And then they had another person there as well. I can look at my agenda here and see what their name was. But they were talking about the power of nature in terms of mental health, and even, even photographs or pictures of nature and the impact they have on people's well-being. And then to start thinking about not only your parks as parks, but also your streets as parks. And, and have that, you know, really emphasize the, the building of parks along your streets, and we do a pretty good job of that. But it did make me think that this should be part of our visioning work, not just land use. And, and, and both of the people that were involved in that indicated a willingness to at least listen to coming out and giving us some guidance on that issue as well. And then we had a discussion about strategies to reduce crime and election interference. I mentioned the session on, and we had CISA there as well. And they're emphasizing, you know, us getting in contact with them if we have any cybersecurity issues, or suspect that we might. And those AI uses and opportunities for cities, those were quite a dramatic sort of, well, that was a great way to spend a couple of hours going through that, the exercises they had for us, and then just listening and learning. One of the things that I think James, Member Pierce, said earlier, but we had a little murmuring in the crowd, and he said, you know, hey, folks, it made me think of Karen Bass, who is the mayor of Los Angeles. They were talking about civility and respect. She said, it's gotten to the point in the Los Angeles City Council where it starts off with about a half hour of expletives and, and near physical activity between certain council members. She said, it's just, it's just unbelievable, the dissent out of civility and respect for people and other people's opinions. So I think it's good to remind people, hey, we've had good success here in treating each other respectfully and acting in a civil sort of way, respecting other people's opinions, and we want that to continue. So that's kind of a quick overview of some of the things we did out there. And I still owe you, I think, supplemental report on, on the winter meeting as well. So that's it for me. Anything else that prompted anybody to think about? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, Member Pierce seconds. We adjourn the meeting of the Edina City Council this Tuesday, February 20, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourned the meeting of the city council? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. You stand?